Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get it right? You started it off perfectly. Well, welcome. Glad to see you here. Somebody says we're here to want to see the council today.
You know, I, I'm telling you that the, the meeting is probably not going to last more than three or four hours. And we're going to have, we're, we have a special canvas of the vote that we've decided to put off to the very last part of the agenda, so you can stay with us all evening. Are you happy? You don't look happy. We're going to start with councilman reports. Councilman Felice Brandon Watson.
Good evening, Mayor and the audience. It's been kind of a quiet month, but I did go to Arts and Crafts Festival. I think that was kind of a good beginning. Very well done again. And today I had the pleasure of attending the Chamber Commerce Legislative Breakfast. And it was a very interesting affair that I found. We had the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate both there. Talked briefly about lots of different subjects that are going to be hot button issues and have been hot button issues for our legislative bodies. And there was a couple of areas that they artfully sidestepped, which was interesting. She was not in that one piece, said the word immigration anywhere. Or order, which I thought was interesting. But it was a good event and it was very well attended.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Romack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Besides the art festival early in the month, I, I want to thank Kyle and the crew from the city who has gotten our, the parking lot done in Stags Park. You guys have to understand that we really needed that, that parking lot because of the danger to kids walking across the street from the lake to Stags Park. And it's, it was just a, a real kind of a nightmare and a worrisome situation. And it's all done, other than a little bit of landscaping, but I'm sure that Kyle and company will get that all taken care of. But anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue.
Welcome freeholders. Do we have to vote? We had to vote everybody in in order to get a full room for a council meeting, which is okay. That's all right. Anyways, awesome and to see a lot of faces and I was really happy that we had eighteen for fourteen spots. That's pretty important in our town because many times we haven't had that. Kyle's group, Paige is on the committee. How about those Christmas lights? They are beautiful. And I love that you put them up early and hallelujah. I've had some citizens say, why can't you keep them up all year? I'm like, well, we're renting them, but soon, soon we will have those RBG lights. Anyway, they're beautiful. So, well done. And then Arts Festival as well was wonderfully attended. And then yay, the Litchfield Bond actually did pass and it passed by ninety-five votes. So, as we know with the freeholders election, every single solitary vote counts, doesn't it? So, that's good news for the community and thanks you to all of you that voted for our schools. That's all.
Thanks. Councilman James.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, Councilman Donahue kind of stole my thunder there on the lights. I was just going to pass my compliments along. It's, uh, could almost be said the downtown area kind of looks like Disneyland when you're walking around, so, thank you.
All right. Councilman Claire, do you have anything to report from Texas?
Yes, sir. Just echoing some of the, the previous thoughts, the, the Arts Far, uh, Arts Festival was great. We really enjoyed it. It was great to see everybody out and the weather being perfect for it. And the Christmas lights downtown are spectacular. Everything I've heard is, is how much everyone's enjoying. Uh, so kudos to Matthew and the team for getting that together at this time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Monday, the mayor and I attended the, uh, meeting at, uh, John's Church Room. St. Peters. On the Camelback Park, listened to the citizens, the input of what they want to see Camelback Park look like. And the conversation centered around the wall, whether it should have a view fence or not. Uh, the parking lot, whether there should be a parking lot or not, and traffic on Vianueva. Uh, that's, will come back to us at some point. Also, last Thursday, the mayor and I and Councilwoman Donahue was at the, um, Saint Peters? Again. John's Church, as I, as I remember it. We had the Arizona Corporation Commission, they came and held a meeting to meet the public. Lot of citizens from Pebble Creek, a lot of citizens from Litchfield Park. And the issue was liberty and the lack of water pressure. A lot of comments were given to the corporation commissioners to take back and, and digest and, and with the problems that we've had. And congratulations to all the volunteers who were elected, um, to our Board of Freeholders. The the, the thing that I, I, I hope would be near and dear in your hearts as you kind of goes through this long process, which I think has been shortened. If I saw, maybe I'd get a march, maybe a deadline to get this done, uh, which is great. But the thing that I've heard for my twenty years sitting here consistently from the citizens is to maintain our small-town atmosphere. So, with everything you draft, as you're going through it, you know, think about that. You know, think, think how it's going to affect, uh, the, the small-town atmosphere, the quality of life. Uh, that's a very, very important to all of us and one of the reasons why we're doing this. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of items. I'm not going to repeat the St. Peter uh, the meeting about the Camelback, the Camelback Wall and how that's going to impact the residents that live in that area around, around that park. I also had several comments from residents about the lights, so I want to say to the staff that you did a good, good job of the lights. They look really nice and that very good thing for our city for the holidays. Uh, finally, there are a couple of events that were of interest maybe to people in the audience. We had, uh, we, we do a flag, a flag raising ceremony for, to honor the birthday of each of our services. And this month where we did the two-hundred-and-forty-eighth birthday for the Marine Corps. And it was a, it was an unusually nice experience because we have a lot of Marine Corps veterans that live in Litchfield Park and a lot of them came out to the, to the ceremony. And it was a, it was a, it was a good combination between the Marine Corps veterans and then the kids from the fifth grade at Litchfield School who were in the flag program. And they came and they helped us raise the flag. And so it was a, it was a nice mixture of the community, you know, and a good community event for a small town like we have here. Finally, there's a, there's an effort going on to bring, uh, kind of a world famous event to the valley that I had an opportunity to go, to go assist on in terms of making a pitch for, uh, for it. I don't know how, I'm assuming most of you have heard of the Reno Air Races. It's pretty, a pretty significant air race, uh, brings in hundreds of thousands of dollars into the Reno economy with all of the, all of the groups of people that come in, both to fly their planes in the races and, and, and also to spend money and, and watch the races. So, uh, they are moving the races outside. They're going to move from Reno this, so the next, the next air race run by the Reno Air Races will not be in Reno. It will be somewhere else and renamed something else. And they have a real serious interest in coming to Buckeye. Buckeye has a, has a really nice airport. It's got a lot of space around the airport where they can host this kind of an event. Uh, they have some experience in hosting it because they've done an airshow now for several years that brings in, that brings in three, three to four hundred planes from outside of the valley that fly into this, uh, airshow every year. So, they've got some, they've got some really good experience for running it. So, we were, we made a pitch, a pitch on Tuesday night. And excuse me, that continued into meetings today for, for this, for the Reno Air Show people, the racing, to, to bring the race to Buckeye. So, I'm, I'm hoping that you're going to hear a positive announcement on that in the future. Uh, and that brick kind of, that brings it up for me and now we've got
Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me okay? Councilmember Claire, can you hear me, sir? Okay. We would ask as you speak, please, please speak in your microphone so we can be sure everyone hears and make sure that your green light is on on the base of your microphone, please. That being said, you do have the report in your packet, so just a few things to hit on there. A lot of things I was going to say has, have already been said, so thank you for that. Um, congratulations to our freeholders. Staff looks forward to working with you and assisting you in any way that we can. Myself and Paige and Terry will all be available, just let us know any way that we can help. We look forward to that. It's going to be a busy December. It's a tight schedule, but you can get it done and it will help any way that we can. I'm also, thank you for the council members that attended the ACC meeting. Several of you were there, we appreciate that. Also, the Goodyear City Manager was there. There were a lot of residents there from Palm Valley, a lot of the same issues that were said. Thank you especially to Commissioner Tovar and, um, Marques Peterson for being there. We do appreciate them being there. And also those of you that attended the Camelback Park meeting, that was interesting to hear the citizens' input about the wall and also the parking. So, staff certainly heard those concerns and is working on some changes to bring back. And for those of you that weren't there, we'll be sending out a postcard soon to the residents that live close by so they can participate in our survey to tell us what they want, so we can bring you guys those results back. So, when we bring you a design to say that X percentage of citizens wanted this, Y percent wanted that. So, please watch that as it goes. Also, you will see city staff will be bringing city line back. It has been about a year since we've had a city line. It will be changing to an email newsletter that goes out. Because just to be honest, we used to spend twelve thousand dollars a year printing it, so it will be a email newsletter now. But there will be hard copies available in City Hall that will be available for anyone that would like to pick up a hard copy. I would look for that to come out around Christmas. Uh, please to say that Avondale PD is doing a great job and thank you guys for being here as always. And slowing down the traffic on Litchfield and Camelback, I think we can all say that it is, it's working. The speed limits are being enforced and people are slowing down. There's been a few citations to get that done, but people are slowing down and that's what matters. And lastly, of course, but certainly not least, uh, next week is Thanksgiving, as crazy as that seems, and we certainly wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Are there any questions for the city manager? Okay, if not, then we're going to move our, our agenda around a little bit to accommodate the newly-elected freeholders so that they don't have to spend the evening with us, although they're certainly welcome. Uh, I want to add congratulations to all of you who won your elections. And I also want to thank everyone who ran as a freeholder. Uh, we, we do appreciate the fact that you're willing to volunteer your time to work on this project. Uh, it, it is a very, very important project for the city. It's a milestone really in the city's history. And, you know, if we can, if we can come together and adopt a, a strong charter, it will, it will help us, uh, as a council to be able to make, uh, to make ordinances and to establish policies and procedures that will keep our small town. It will keep the small town, it will help us keep the small-town feel. It will help us protect the health and welfare and safety of our residents. So, it's a very important task that you're undertaking and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to volunteer your time to do it. And because of that, we're going to move your canvas of the vote up to the very first item now. So, Ms. City Clerk, do you have a presentation of the final votes that we need to approve by resolution?
Mayor and Council, uh, the information is in your packet. This resolution will adopt the final results from Maricopa County regarding the questions on the November seventh election. Should the city move forward with the formation? And if so, elect a fourteen-member Board of Freeholders.
Here, any questions from council concerning the, the election results which are in your packet? If not, is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash five-five-eight adopting the official election results of the Litchfield Park Special Election held November seventh, twenty-twenty-three and approve the issuance of a certificate of election for the elected Board of Freeholders?
Some of their
For the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the, uh, vote has been canvassed by resolution of the council and so the official vote is now our official vote. It's final and, and you have each been declared elected, each of you that, that were the top fourteen vote getters. I, I have a certificate of election here for each of you. And so if you want to come up, uh, when I call your name, I will give you your certificate and then you're free to go until Friday, when you need to go to work. Uh, Paul Tronicki.
The top vote getter.
Michael Faith. Lisa Brandon Watson, is she here? Gay Romack.
She's, uh, late.
The councilperson said you were late. I said, no, she's here. Congratulations. Barton Hetchard.
What's
That's Marty. Susan Fix.
Can you turn the sound? It's, uh
Anchez, it's Claire.
She's on Zoom.
On the screen, Anchez is Claire. Uh, Suzanne Allen. Chuck Emmert. Chuck. Uh, Ken Jones.
Welcome back.
I have trouble with this one because I, I don't know how, it says Robert, but I know him by body. Okay, I'll, I'll save it to last. How about Will Felice? Will here? All right, we'll miss, we'll get Will's certificate later. Uh, Andrew Frazier. Now you're last. I, it's, we're not, we're not going to go with Robert, we're just going to call you Bobby. Uh, he's already, must already have a certificate. He's not in my list, my certificate list. Did you already give Sonny's, his certificate?
Sonny will receive his on Friday. He is in North Carolina.
All right, so he'll be here Friday. All right, so again, uh, thank you for being involved in this. I look forward to seeing the, uh, your efforts and how it comes out, so. Good luck. We'll see you on Friday. Come maybe and talk to you a little bit before we get started.
This, this group of talent is absolutely amazing. And I look at the average age, it's a lot younger than this council, so maybe that's our replacements at some point.
You keep, you know, you, you bring the, the, uh, average age up, you know that. All right, so we're going to go we're going to, I thought it was my computer. It's Michael Faith turning our lights off.
Okay, thanks, guys.
So, that brings us to this meeting's response to, uh, the last minute's call to the community. There was one speaker at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Mahoney, Peter Mahoney. That response has been given to, to Mr. Mahoney, uh, by the city manager in, uh, in some detail. Uh, it, it went through and looked at, at the, uh, the quality of our medians and the lights and discussed a variety of issues that Mr. Mahoney had brought up. So, that brings us now to this meeting's call, called the community. And I have one request to speak from Ms. Sandy Simon.
Hello, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, happy Thanksgiving, as this other gentleman said, and a healthy one to you all. Um, I just have one item to talk about and that is the illumination or non-illumination of the flag in the middle of our city. I went to the grocery late last night, came back and saw all these beautiful decorations. And then I saw the flag, you can't even see it. And my husband and I have a military museum in honor of Frank Luke Junior, uh, down in Goodyear. And we're big proponents of abiding by United States flag etiquette. And that flag is illuminated about that high up on the flagpole. So, it's, it's not, I mean, you, you look at these beautiful decorations and everything's lit except the flag. And it should be the first thing lit actually in, in our estimation. But the thing is, I went, I called the city back in August. Even in, you know, in the summer, it was not lit properly. Years ago, there was, um, spotlight on that first palm, right straight west of the flagpole. And it shone right on the flag and it was wonderful. It was completely well, properly illuminated. But now, you know, there's this, spotlights down in the cement and it just doesn't do the job. So, actually, about ten days ago, I went to the city, uh, City Hall and spoke to Allison and then even to Kyle. And they were saying that there are some kind of plans to get the flag illuminated properly. So, the only reason I'm speaking tonight is that I hope those plans will come to fruition and soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our report section. The first report is from the Goodyear Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Ed Paul, Deputy Chief with the Goodyear Fire Department. I'm here to present to you the, uh, fire department activities in Litchfield Park for the month of October twenty-twenty-three. Uh, first, the prevention part of it. We did one plan review, one construction permit and twelve occupancy inspections. On the, uh, emergency response, uh, numbers, we ran a total of sixty-nine incidents in Litchfield Park. That is one up from September and four more than October of twenty-two. Sixty-one of those were emergency medical calls. One of them was a car accident at Village and Litchfield Road. Uh, the other ones were good intent calls, uh, mostly false alarms. Uh, the numbers you really like to talk about, uh, the care homes. Hacienda. Hacienda had fifteen calls, eight of those were falls and three of those were not transported from the facility. And there were a total of ten transports out of there. La Loma had six calls total, one of those was a fall and it was transported to the hospital. Five others were transported. Any questions?
Vice Mayor. It's your, it's your time on the agenda.
I, I had asked the city manager to prepare some information on our two, uh, major users of your services. And turns out about forty percent of all calls are done by two businesses. And one of those businesses, um, Hacienda, is twenty-two percent of all calls of the fire department for the fiscal year. Twenty-two percent of all calls, one business. And they have, um, more calls than Sun Health, but they have, uh, Sun Health has three times the population of this one organization. Their, their use of our services is huge. We have an agreement with Sun Health on reimbursement over a certain amount, which was done as part of the agreement to expand. And I had the city manager crunch some numbers to see what that looked like. I had him also crunch it to see what it would look like if, um, Hacienda was on the same system. And I'd like at some point maybe to have a meeting where we can discuss this among ourselves and look at the manager's information and talk about this. I, I, I still struggle with the concept of us underwriting the business plan of one business in the city, all the citizens doing it, so, thank you.
I, I think that was just a comment, not a question.
Yes, it was.
Any other questions or comments to the Goodyear, uh, Fire Department? It looks like no other comments. Uh, thank you again for your service. Please let, uh, let, let your firefighters know, we appreciate what they do for our community. They, they're very professional outfit and it, it makes our residents, I think, feel very safe, so thank you.
Thank you for the support. Thanks.
All right, next up is the Avondale Police Department Report from Sergeant Emmett.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Sergeant Ray Emmett, Avondale PD. I'll be covering the numbers here for the police department for October twenty-twenty-three. So, for October, we had a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-four calls for service. Out of those, sixty-one percent of them were officer-initiated, so checking out with suspicious people, business checks, traffic stops, et cetera. Thirty-nine percent were citizen-initiated or, uh, call for service called in by citizens. Uh, we conducted eighty-five traffic stops, uh, most of those being along Litchfield Road and Camelback Road with the speed limit change. Uh, continues to be a high priority. Uh, down a little bit, uh, September, we had had a hundred-and-thirty-five when we first changed it. Uh, but we were putting so much emphasis there, we were kind of lacking in some other areas. So, we kind of had to pull back a little bit, but it's still a big focus. We've, uh, put out speed trailers, we've put out, uh, baked cars that are, uh, unmanned, but more as a presence to slow people down. And then, starting this month, we're starting, uh, officers coming in on traffic details at certain times where we get the most complaints, like early morning hours to do nothing but traffic before they start their shift. So, still a big focus, but trying to do some other things as well. Uh, we noticed the beginning of the month, some of our calls for service, you'll see, uh, starting, uh, October second, we had some criminal damage or, uh, some damage at our parks, at the Lepo Park and Rose Park. We had multiple occurrences where they were damaging the bathrooms. So, we kind of had to pull back. Our graveyard officers are doing more things at the parks now, making their runs throughout the night, checking on those to deter the damages that were happening at the parks there. Uh, beginning of the month, on the first, we had a recovered stolen vehicle. There was a shots fired call over off of, uh, Luna Drive and Luna Road. Uh, officers went over there to investigate. There were no, uh, no evidence of any type of shooting or anything, but there was a loud house party that we shut down. While shutting it down, there, we noticed a vehicle out there that had a broken window, looked like it might have been stolen. Uh, did come back stolen. We didn't get any flock alerts due to the fact that it was stolen out of Phoenix and the victim was still asleep. We called and woke the victim up. She then made the report with Phoenix and came and recovered the vehicle, so, um, we also, on the sixteenth, we had a found child call. That was at four forty-eight in the morning. Uh, we got a call, uh, driver at Indian School in Dice Art, uh, found a six, seven-year-old girl in the roadway in Indian School there, early in the morning, took her to the Circle K, uh, called us. We, we came out there. Uh, the girl was non-verbal, so that we didn't really have too much to go off of. So, we got all the officers that were on duty to kind of spread out through the area. We checked the neighborhood, uh, north of Albertson's, the apartment complex right there, uh, just east. And then the neighborhood just south across the road there for open doors, anything at all. And we got lucky that within an hour, we did find an open door at the apartment complex in the MCSO jurisdiction. And the mom came and, uh, we were able to reunite them. Uh, the girl is, uh, special needs, they do have extra locks. It just happened, the husband went to work and forgot to do it and the kid got up. We still made our report with DCS, which we have to do, but, uh, they did a information report only on that, so. Um, and then last one, actually two more. We had an indecent exposure call on the twenty-second. That was, uh, by Turtle Park. Uh, report, a juvenile female, uh, was jogging along by the park where an adult male in a white car pulled up and exposed himself to her. She ran off some people at the park, they called the police. We did ATL the area, we used our flock cameras. The description she gave us was very general, though, so we didn't have too much to go off of as far as limiting it down. We came up to about eight vehicles that kind of matched with this general description we had. They were all lived pretty much when the, within the walls of Litchfield Park. We contacted the owners. None of the descriptions matched the person, so as of now, we weren't able to actually identify as far as an actual suspect or vehicle on that. And then lastly, on the twenty-eighth, at the end of the month, we had a burglary up at the Hilltop over here. Uh, officers, we checked that, you know, a few times a day up there. Uh, when he was going up there to do a routine check, he saw a gentleman walking across the dirt field with a weed eater that we know is by the Conex. He stopped, detained him. He admitted to going into the Conex, taking a few other items. So, we ended up arresting him. Uh, we booked him in jail as a felony due to being a burglary. The county attorney turned down the burglary portion just because of the dollar value pretty much. But we submitted the theft charges to our city prosecutor for review. And, um, that's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions or want more details on any of them?
Questions from council, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Approximately a year ago, we had a large party and a shooting, which was very, very, very definitely and clearly a shooting on Luna.
Yes.
Is this the same house?
No, this was, this was, this was a different residence.
How close, how, are they related in any way?
It's tough to tell. I mean, we, we, we couldn't connect any dots of actually relating like the same group of people or anything like that. But it is definitely a possibility, though. But it was, but it was down the street a little bit more, though, the actual house party. But it was, but it was down the street a little bit more though, the actual house party.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any questions? I don't. Okay, thank you for your report. Again, thank, thank your officers for their, the work they do in our community.
One, one more thing that I, I will bring up though is that it was a young kid having a party with his parents out of town. Uh, parents, we did talk to them, were very upset about it. This was not normal for them, so they did. They were very on our team here as far as coordinating to help out about that. So hopefully it'll be a one-time issue, hopefully, so.
I think that could be worse than anything you did.
Right.
The uh, we want to, we want to thank your officers for their, all of the extra efforts they've given for helping us get this speed down on Litchfield Road and Camelback. Litchfield Road is, I drive on it a lot and it's clearly slower now. I'm going to guess five to ten miles an hour slower at least. We still are getting a lot of reports from the Camelback, particularly early mornings, cement truck runs. So anytime you have time where officers can take a look out on Camelback to uh, to the west of Litchfield Road.
Yes.
Those trucks are still a big problem.
You know, then we've heard those complaints and that was when I, the uh traffic report and I was talking about the extra patrols. Were geared between three and six in the morning that we were going to try to get them out there, because that's what we've been hearing.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have to go off agenda again because we have a late person came, who came so late. Now he's gone, is he still here? Andrew, Andrew, are you back there somewhere?
Maybe in the lobby or something like that.
Yeah. We did this just to, so he could stand up. And the speed. Still, they're still going really fast. Big guys, the biggest.
He loves us.
Did he leave? Okay. All right, we'll see him on Friday. They did, twice. Okay, so now we're back on the agenda. Uh, our next item is a finance report from Ms. Peterson. Who's in deep conversation. Ms. Peterson, do you have a finance report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have our finance report um through the end of October. And I can't see it as well as I thought I could, so I'm gonna have to look at my computer. Um, last month. Um, the Vice Mayor had asked me to um go back to um pre-recession times and a look back at revenues and expenses then. Um, through the recession and then where we're at and then to project um several years out, just to see if we're sustainable based on what we're doing now. So I went back to two thousand, um fiscal year two thousand and six. Um, the gray bar is our operating expenditures and the blue bar is our operating revenues. And then that red line is our um fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. So you can see um, the revenues have exceeded expenditures every year, which has caused. You know, the June thirty fund balance to continue to increase to where it's at today. Um, when it takes that big dip, um next fiscal year, that's the ten million dollars in cash to finish Litchfield Square. And then it slowly starts to come back up as um, I put in here that we'll start to collect um revenues from Litchfield Square in fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, there's a few other assumptions I put in here. Um, that while we know urban revenue sharing um will start to decrease in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, I just put in here um an assumption that the grocery tax would go away in fiscal year twenty-seven. We don't know that yet, but to be conservative. But that same year, I also assumed a million dollars in revenue from Litchfield Square. Um, I just wanted to point out that in fiscal year thirty, that the twenty fifteen bonds will be paid in full. Um, and then in fiscal year thirty-one, our full series twenty-twenty-one principal payment begins. Um, and one, just one other thing to point out, that fund balance, it does account for capital expenses. But the, the blue and gray are just operating revenues and operating expenses. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that if there are any.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Page was the, the uh, the gray, the operating expenditures. They're going up maybe at an estimated rate of inflation only from twenty-four on? Is that? How you looked at that? Is there nothing? I mean, how, how did you arrive at that, at that guesstimate? And I know it's nothing more than a, you know, crystal ball looking in the future.
Yeah, it, it's, it's really just a guesstimate. Um, I did look back and I, at how our um expenses have increased. Over the past few years, but with high inflation, I think that's, it was unusually high. So I did build in a small, small increase ea- each year, but it, it truly is just um, it's a guess.
But wh- what year was the shopping center at Camelback and? Litchfield Road brought online? Anybody remember?
Um, I know it's when revenues um started to really uptick, so probably seventeen.
I mean, we've got a, a period of time there where the revenues and expenditures really were. Far apart, which is how we came to this big account balance. Oh. Great, okay. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
I think, I think it answers the question that even if, even if the development goes very slowly with Litchfield Square. And we have to continue making bond payments out of our, our revenue streams. And if we lose the grocery tax, which is looking less likely today than it did six months ago. Our revenues are still sufficient to support the payment of the bonds and, and capital expenditures for the community. So we're. And still, we would still maintain a very large fund balance. We're, we've been, we've been very conservative in the way we financed and, and tried to put together the, the Litchfield Square uh process. And I think you can see that it, it is um, you know, we're, we are fine, but we're gonna have to continue to manage the situation. Much the same as we've managed it uh throughout the whole process, so.
Excellent graph, thank you very much. It's exactly what I was looking for.
Thank you. Not working. Next slide, please.
Lights are not working?
There we go. Thank you, Maria. Um. So for our October um sales tax. Uh, we had another good month with retail. Um, it was up ten percent over October of last year. Um, overall, year over year, it's up eleven percent. Um, online sales had a big jump of thirty-six percent. Uh, month over this month of, or this October over last October, or sixty-five percent year over year. Um, restaurant and bar, um just up one percent. Utilities are up twenty-nine, uh rentals are up seven, and then other is down seventeen percent. But, and this is just an assumption that I'm making, but what I think might be happening, um use taxes can, is included in this other category. And I think people are now appropriately paying the online sales tax rather than paying it as a use tax. And I think that's why the online sales is increasing so much and why we're seeing a decrease in the use tax. Which is actually better because the online sales goes into the state shared bucket where um use tax doesn't. Um, construction sales tax um is down fifty-three percent over October of last year and twenty-seven percent year over year. And that's all I have on sales tax unless there's any questions.
Questions from council?
You go down two, please. Thank you. Um, for the general fund, and in total, our revenues through, that posted through the end of October are five point four million or thirty-six percent of budget estimates. Um, we're right, right now, we're thirty-four percent through the year, so revenues overall are two percent over budget. Um, our expenditures in total are just under four point two million or thirty-four percent. Um, last month, Mayor, you asked me to um account for the debt service payment by month. So I, I did include that. That payment hasn't been made yet, but this at least accounts for. Um, I've basically encumbered um the funds. Next slide, please. So our net general fund operations are one point two million. And that leaves an ending fund balance in the general fund of twenty-seven point four million. Next slide, please. And these next two are the detail for rec and special events. It's all included in your packet. Um, I won't go through it unless there's any questions. And, next slide. There we go. So for our special revenue funds, um our HERF revenue, um it, it is coming in, in under budget at thirty-one percent. We've collected just over a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Um, it is earning interest, which we've collected over fifteen thousand. So far, our HERF expenditures are just over nineteen thousand, so that leaves an ending fund balance of just over nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Um, Litchfield Square expenses that are posted through the end of October are just over two point six million. Um, we are using uh bond proceeds this year to pay for those expenses. Our slids, um expenses have exceeded revenues by about thirty-eight thousand, but that's just. The property tax cycle. We'll start seeing more property tax revenue here pretty quick. Next slide, please. Um, the court enhancement fund has collected just over twenty-eight hundred. Um, our expenses are at six thousand. And that leaves us with an ending fund balance of just over seventy-four thousand. Last slide, please. And um, just once again, our general fund balance is just over twenty-seven point four million. That does include. Um, the three point five million we did receive from the county for Camelback Road improvements. Um, in this potential future expenses that could impact the fund balance. Um, the Hilltop restoration of nine hundred thousand. I, I do want to point out, I had a mistake in my report. Um, before and I mentioned it as the Sun Health restoration, but I, I want to clarify, it's actually for the Hilltop restoration. And then our ten million to complete Litchfield Square. And that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions from council?
Uh, one of our tax indicators is like the canary in the, in the cave. You know what I'm trying to say, watch out. Give us an indication that um it's about to go. Is there anything you should be watching in terms of tax?
Um, like the local sales tax? I do look at it um every month and I do analyze um the, the local activity. Um, I think we are in a, a fortunate spot that a lot of our sales tax is generated from essential needs. But yeah, I mean, when you see like the restaurant bar, I mean, it was only down one percent, but. You know, that could, could possibly be a sign.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for your report. We'll go on to the next item, which is a report from Mr. Frok on, hold on. I'm sorry. It's the cap, it's the Capitol Report, this is next. Is it? From our city engineer.
You won't hear it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. CIP updates. I'll start off with Southwest Ver- Valley Truck Stop. The deliverable uh schedule for the report, or as I like to call it, the never-ending gobstopper schedule. Um, got kicked down the road a little bit further, so we anticipate getting that report in the early part of December. Uh, originally, it was promised in spring, so they are adding to the uh data analysis and the recommendations that discussed in the last month's meeting. So we look forward to getting that. Some other miscellaneous items.
We're gonna get that as a draft, right?
Yes, sir. So they'll, they'll have a review period, uh which is, we don't know how long that is, and then they'll issue a final draft that'll be sealed by engineers.
So we will, and we will, they will take our comments if we have.
Absolutely, and they'll uh itemize them similar to the way ADOT, if anybody's involved with an ADOT project, there's a big public period where they review drafts and all the agencies are. Able to provide comments and then they provide responses to each comment. Uh, miscellaneous items, Litchfield Road accident repairs were completed uh last month. Uh, in. Uh, on top of that, there was an accident that happened the day before the last council meeting, which Aiken Gardner was able to complete repairs for. So as of right now, uh there is no damage that needs repairing in the roundabout on Litchfield Road. Uh, how, there was an accident, uh November first, a damaged yield sign, but staff took care of that. That yield sign is a, might as well paint a target on it. Water service leak uh occurred on Cloverfield Circle near the gate. The interesting thing about that leak is uh Liberty. Uh, utilities provides us a water service at Rose Garden uh Park. The main extends all the way to that area. And there is a second meter uh that is on that main in which. Uh, I discovered that Liberty actually charges the HOA uh from that ma- that meter, which is a metered service itself. So, water supply is double metered. Just another thing that Liberty has to correct in that area. So we're getting that worked on and seeing if there's any uh funding refunds or anything like that, that has to happen.
Has the HOA been notified?
Uh, I believe they had, well, I was told by Liberty that they were going to uh run with the ball, which means I have to follow up with them to find out that question, but I will ask them. Additionally, various signs throughout Camelback Road after the annexation and staff took care, uh took over uh maintenance of Camelback Road. There is um a, what seems to be a never-ending um requirement for repairing damaged signs, a lot of hop curbs. If anybody that drives along in front of fries where McDot used to come out and change the signs and areas in front of AutoZone, things like that. So staff is doing a really good job of being on top of those. Uh, Camelback parking lot, uh, we, a lot of members talked about the meeting that just occurred earlier this week. We had a great turnout, great public feedback. We will uh continue working on the conceptual uh plans and designs for that Camelback Park. A perimeter wall, additionally, the conceptual layout uh got the most support for the perimeter wall in the turn lane. So we feel that uh we can start moving forward to the more final design package, once we figure out uh the orientation uh if, of view fence versus solid fence. Public Works Facility, ongoing uh initial design efforts, we're on the second iteration with our architect. We've worked with Public Works and other departments to review the layout. As we know, general fund budget for the project is two point two million. We, and our goal is to come in significantly below that. But we also want to provide a product that Public Works staff uh can utilize uh and, and be more efficient and just generally be happy. Uh, Public Works, uh and uh Kyle at Public Works informed me that uh the anticipated delivery for the uh flashing stop and yield signs, which was supposed to be tomorrow. Uh, will actually be next week. So hopefully, by the time I give this report next month, that we'll have all eight of those flashing signs. Uh, installed at the flashing yield signs at the roundabout, flashing stop signs here at the circle. Traffic signs citywide, uh we have installed thirty-five uh, thirty-five speed limit signs. Uh, ta- taken down the old speed limit signs and replacing them with the thirty-five mile an hour on Litchfield and Camelback. Uh, there is an additional seven signs that staff is working on in the upcoming weeks to install. Uh, we had feedback from council, mayor. And also the pu- the general public uh inquiries on a few additional signs. I know Avondale PD requested um some speed limit signs along Litchfield Road as well. Bird laid speed humps, uh product change, original product, we found out was not in stock. Uh, we didn't know that for weeks when we thought the order was being processed. And so we have uh looked into an additional product that uh we are hoping will come in uh quicker. That is my report on uh CIP updates. I will entertain any questions, concerns?
Questions from council, Mr. Vice Mayor.
The speed humps that are on Bird Lane right now, those are not the final version?
Uh, Vice Mayor, the uh, the new product that will be installed is gonna be a composite material, so it'll be a, a, a much smaller product. It will allow for bypass flows a lot more efficiently, which was the reason why these two came out. So it, anybody that's been in a parking lot will know how bad those are. These will not be that bad, but they'll be uh more abruptly. So if anybody that's been in a parking lot will know how bad those are, these will not be that bad, but they'll be more abrupt than a luxurious speed table. So they are meant for twenty five mile an hour collector roads.
The ones that are there now, though, today?
The ones that were removed.
Those are going to stay, the ones that are there now?
Correct.
So it's the ones removed, you're changing?
Yes, sir. We'll put, where we mill and overlay, we'll put the new ones in the exact same spot.
Okay. And you mentioned Camelback Park. Has the Parks and Rec Commission given any input on the view fence, the parking lot?
Not specific to my knowledge for the view fence portion. They have on the Camelback Park parking lot, and they, and staff has, that interacts with RPG has given feedback on the actual alignment of where to put the perimeter, which is the right away line, but that is as far as I know as the feedback we received.
I think we have to be careful. We don't go stepping on toes and commissions that we set up to do things. So we, I think as a courtesy out of respect to them for volunteering their time, this should go to them to look at, bring recommendations back to us.
And Vice Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, that is the goal. We wanted to get the public feedback meeting out first, and then the various commissions will review Camelback Park. The Camelback Park parking lot, the turn lane, and the wall as a package.
Were they invited to the meeting at the church? Did they know about it? Was there any special attention given to them to be there? Were they? Okay, good. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Romack? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keith, was there a, I was led to believe that there was going to be some, some pavement work at Camelback, not Camelback, at Indian School and Dicer, and that entire corner paving. And I thought, I thought that would have been at least on the schedule or somewhere in process, and I don't see anything happening there.
Councilman Romack, the Dicer and Indian School Reconstruction Project is on the CIP for this fiscal year. Right now, the project is in a pre-final design condition, and we are coordinating with Avondale on requirements because a large portion of the improvements on Indian School are in their jurisdiction. That is a, that takes a little bit of time.
Sure.
However, that Dicer and Indian School Road Reconstruct Project does need a little bit more horsepower and attention to get completed in this fiscal year, but that is the goal.
It is in the queue, so that's, that's a good thing. Thank you.
So I will be asked this. I know Vice Mayor Faith just did. So the two that are, two bumps that are being replaced will be abrupt, but the rest of them will stay as they are, or ultimately, will they all be abrupt?
Councilman Donahue, I think this is, we could consider this a trial run. It's a good product to consider over what the paved speed homes do to drainage. We have a significant drainage problem on Bird Lane itself. Fortunately, these two locations are the worst-case scenario, which we wanted to get rid of. The idea being that we're going to put these two in and monitor their performance and determine if that's a good product to continue forward with.
I will tell you that, I mean, obviously, I only do two. I'll get, I'll get the two abrupts to get home. But I do go all the way around, so I don't have to go down Bird Lane and do all the speed bumps. I go up to Litchfield and around, so it works, it works for me, but anyway, yeah.
Then one of the goals was to keep people off that road. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Thank you, sir. Keith, when we had the pipe breaks with Liberty, did we get anyone to get out on site and actually take a look at the condition of the pipes and any of the equipment that we might be facing, dealing with all the other issues with Liberty at this time?
Councilman McClair, we had myself, Kyle, and Public Works, various other staff from Public Works. I'm almost certain that planning made their way out there. We've, I've documented the condition of the pipes and the services and coordinated with Liberty Utilities Operational Manager. The goal is for, to get them to try to come up with their own CIP program. As a result of these inspections, we know that a lot of deteriorating pipes exist, not only in the roadways, but a lot of these mains actually run through people's backyards, and they don't even know it. They're made out of galvanized, they're made out of cast and plate, you know, ACP asbestos concrete. They're very old, old technology and are prone to the breaks that we have been seeing. So we, we have a good idea. We have documented the conditions. Unfortunately, we can only provide so much to get Liberty to get a capital project going to replace these deteriorating pipes. The best we could do is monitor them and make sure that their, their actual repairs are done per code.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Romack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keith, who has oversight on Liberty? When I was building that hall over at St. Peters, we had a, we had a pipe problem, a water supply problem, and we needed to shut off the water completely so that we could fix it. And they couldn't shut it off. They were, they were about a quarter mile north. They'd let all the businesses know that they were going to be without water, and then they couldn't, they couldn't shut it off. And we couldn't work in the hole because the water was coming in fast enough. The guy down there would drown. But it was, it was very embarrassing that they couldn't shut off their own water.
Councilmember Romack, this is a familiar story, the recent breaks, especially in the wave near Camelback. The water was, was running for almost a month while they exercised various valves and learned locations of valves that they didn't know. They went in some yards that had some valves, they dug them up, found them, exercised them. They actually broke one in one of the streets. This happens almost every time there is a break. They have a new exercise of going out and determining how to, how to, how to locate where the valves are, which ones can be turned off. Unfortunately, City Hall, we get a lot of phone calls on, why are my water going in and out of turning on and off? They haven't notified the residents or the businesses. But to answer your original question, overall and makes sure that Liberty, for lack of a better phrase, they have a version of CCNRs. They have to file with the ACC on how they operate their utility, which includes knowing where their system is, knowing how to operate it, having the proper equipment and staff. So there's an overall requirement that they can control their system, expand it if necessary, modify it. So that's why I call it kind of like a CCNR for them. When it comes to areas outside of the right of way, it's where building code comes in, so that's where city can have a little bit more horsepower on that regard, but ultimately, the ACC is the governing body. What do you mean by green pipe? The Orangeburg pipe? That, I think you're talking about orange. It was coated cardboard, it was asphalt, kind of like asphalt paper and coated cardboard. So we have a lot of that here in the city. The recent repairs on Bahia and Bird Lane a couple of months ago where Orangeburg pipes had failed. An Orangeburg pipe is, it essentially turns into paper after a certain amount of time when the asphalt tar just deteriorates. And we're seeing a lot of that. So a lot of these repairs at Liberty are coming in for emergency permits are failed Orangeburg pipe.
Is part of your Camelback review process with the wall, the park expansion, the traffic, looking into calming the traffic on that curve somehow, maybe with speed bumps or anything else?
Vice Mayor, that is a concern we've had. We've actually done a speed study on Beanoeva from all, the south end all the way to where it exits on Camelback. That is a, kind of like a regional review of the whole roadway. Now that we are moving forward with the park, and then, as I mentioned earlier, we might revise conceptual layouts and try to have different options such as on-street parking of some kind, whether it's parallel or angled. That requires a knowledge and the characteristics of traffic patterns in that area, especially on a curve that has limited sight visibility. So I think from the fat and the direction to move forward, we are going to do a traffic study in that area.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next is a report on special projects, Mr. Frock.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Few updates on Litchfield Square. So Lot Three. That's the property that we sold about a year ago to a private developer on the north side of Village Parkway. That project went through the board about a year, was approved by DR. There was a site review board wanted the applicant to come back and provide some further detail to the design review board. Staff's been working, was working with the applicant on that. We took the plans back to design review board at their meeting on November second, and DRB approved the and not just for design review board, but presented it in front of DRB, and it was very warmly received. So we're glad that that project finally does have all of their design review plans approved. What we took back to design review board on November second was a landscape plan, a hardscape and a lighting plan. The project has a lot of hardscape with really nice pavers and inlay of concrete, and those are the site details that DRB wanted to see from last year or so. Moving forward from that, the same applicant has submitted construction plans to our building safety department. The resubmital of those plans were supposed to come in today to our building official, and we're hoping that there were some comments that were made, technical comments on the construction plans about a month or so ago. So the applicant's working to address those and, and bring the project forward. So good progress on Lot Three. On Litchfield Square Park, if you can, obviously, Litchfield Square is a construction site. So certain portions of the property have temporary fencing, but if you look through the fencing, you can see the formation of the centerpiece of Litchfield Square is Litchfield Square Park. All of the perimeter concrete work has been done, so anybody that visits the square can see how big the park is. It's amazing that even for me as a land planner, now that the streets are in, we have a very nice open space area that we'll be able to use in the future for city events as well as for our residents. So if you haven't been out there, you can start to see the the makings of the park, if you will. My report last month was a lot of the grading work, grading and drainage work was underway. Most of that work's been done. There's an underground drainage system that's under construction by Aiken Gardner. There, the project will be topped with a mid-iron sod, starting next month in about three weeks. The park will look significantly different with winter overseed with sod being laid down, so the park will look a lot different probably the next time we come back and give you an update in a month or so. Talked a lot about Honeysuckle Street. That's the first street north of Wigwam Boulevard, so most of the work's done between Old Litchfield Road West to Desert Avenue. That's the street just east of City Hall. The street light poles are going up. There are six on Honeysuckle, north of our restaurants and our the tea shop in, in the area of Desert and Honeysuckle. Now, the electrical subcontractor has been setting poles, the other streetlights, they're the decorative dark poles. They're not energized quite yet with, by APS, Arizona Public Service Company, but most of the poles are being installed this month. So if you go out there, it takes the general contractor probably fifteen, twenty minutes to stand a pole, and so there's quite a few poles that have been installed this week alone. On Old Litchfield Road, at its intersection with Honeysuckle Street, we've talked about a three-way stop sign. I'm pleased to report that our designer EPS group has given us supplementary design with Mr. Janaski is reviewing that, and we hope to implement, once we approve the plans for a three-way stop. This would be just west of the Wigwam Resort. We hope to have that completed by Aiken Gardner by the end of this year or so. As the weather's gotten better, there's a lot more traffic in that area, and so the three-way stop is definitely needed. So lots of good things happening with the square. West of City Hall, the future North South Street is La Loma Avenue. We're going to be excited, those of us that work in that building will be excited when that construction starts, probably early next year. There's some utility work that's underway there now. Last last council meeting, you approved an easement, actually in September, for Cox Communications for some of the utility work in the future La Loma alignment. So that work is being done to make way for the future construction of that street north of, west of City Hall and then north of Wigwam Boulevard. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have tonight.
Questions, Councilman Donahue?
This may be, it's not Feng Shui, but did I smell, is there like manure smell? Is that just means good landscaping coming, right? I think it was today over by Ribbons. I'm like, woo, which is okay. I think that's good for landscape, but is that, was that legit, that I smelled that?
Mayor, Councilmember Donahue, I don't have the best sense of smell. My colleague, Mr. Janaski, who I'm lucky to spend most of my day sharing an office with, asked me yesterday if I smelled that. I did not. I went outside. There was a lot of truckloads brought in of manure, if you will. I did smell it now after he brought it to my attention, and the subcontractor for that is STO Landscaping, and they are spreading that and, and providing a mix to prepare the, the park for the sod. But yeah, that, that is what that is. The odor isn't quite as strong today as it was yesterday, so.
Have we already purchased all the sod for the park?
I'm going to look over at Aiken Gardner. It's in the works, Mayor.
Have we purchased it yet?
It's scheduled to be installed.
So we have purchased it. We have, we have a contract, we already contracted on the sod. Did, did we consider, there, there's a new sod that doesn't need to have, it's a year-round grass that does not need to be overseeded. Did we look at that when we started specing out the sod for the park?
The sod that we'll select is a better or the different sod. It's, it's not a plan. Hard crust. It's typically so. And we will
And there's a, there's a new golf course side, though, that a lot of golf courses are putting in. You do not need to overseed. It stays year-round. I'm wondering if we had even considered that for the park.
Mayor, council, so the, the project's being designed by EPS Group, which is a multidisciplinary design firm, planning, landscape architecture, engineering, traffic engineering, and so the design for the park was completed before I started managing Litchfield Square. The mid-iron turf that I mentioned and that Israel mentioned from Aiken Gardner is what our Public Works folks actually spec'd out and believe is best for their, for the community as well as for their maintenance purposes.
I think it would be worthwhile for you to take at least a look into this, because there was an article, it was actually, the reason I'm even familiar with it today is I think I'd heard about it before, but I don't know that many people used to use it, but I was reading an article. The Mesa Country Club is being totally rebuilt, the golf course is being rebuilt. And one of the things that was talked about in this article is the use of this turf that will eliminate the need for overseed. Which, if that's true, over a period of time, replacing all of our park turf with turf that doesn't need to be overseeded would be a would be a significant cost savings for the city. So it would be at least, it would be at least, we need to at least familiarize ourselves with it. Whether we can use it for this park or not.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our weekly coordination meeting between the city, Aiken Gardner and their subs every Thursday morning over at the construction trailer and we can discuss that tomorrow with our team.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Frack?
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Next item is, is the magistrate court report, which is in your packet. If any questions about that report, please get it to, get the questions to City Manager and he'll get them answered for you. Brings us to our presentation section. We have a presentation for Unified Responder Community Month proclamation. And I think we have Cricket Berryitos. Yeah, I was close. I'm usually not very close, so. So welcome. We, we don't always read these proclamations in detail, but we have, since you're here as our guest, we will do that. This is a proclamation from the city of, from the city of Litchfield Park. Whereas Sounds of Autism is a local nonprofit established in two thousand twelve. And it is through their movement Unified Responder Community, which was initiated in two thousand twenty-one, that they vet resources to provide families and and work with collaborative partners to provide referral resources, services and programs in order to provide more access options and opportunities throughout cities of Arizona for individuals with autism and others at, who are at risk so that no one is ever left alone. Whereas Sounds of Autism is committed to their mission to safely integrate families and children, children of autism, including other at-risk individuals back into society through love and support. Families are the love of their mission and support is everyone else, including agencies, community officials, employers, educators, first responders and service providers. Whereas Sounds of Autism help, helps guide many families who continue to experience gaps in support and services for the early diagnosis, early intervention, mental and behavioral health, as well as housing and opportunities for employment to empower individuals with autism and others at risk to ultimately live as independent adults life, to live as independent adults in throughout their life as possible. Whereas this month and every month, Sounds of Autism Unified Responder Community encourages unity amongst all Arizonians to have compassion and support for individuals living life on a spectrum and other at-risk individuals as they bring a voice to autism to bridge the gaps, one step, one city, one acre at a time. Whereas Sounds of Autism defines acre as A for autism and at-risk families, C for community and community officials, R for first responders of all types, and E for employers and educators, which they believe encompasses unity amongst all. Now therefore, I, Thomas Hoesch, mayor of the city of Litchfield Park, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November as Unified Responder Community Month and encourage all Litchfield Park residents to support individuals who are living life on a spectrum. And the agency is, agencies, officials, employers, educators, first responders and service providers who support them and their families. So if you'd like to come up, I have this proclamation for you. We appreciate your service to our community. We have individuals who I know have benefited from your work. So thank you very much.
This is our protege.
Thank you.
And you're the fifth mayor in the West Valley.
Well, I'm glad I made it. You made it on the game. Thank you. All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. Item nine, A through each. Is there any member on the, on the council who would like to take any item off of the consent agenda for individual consideration?
E and F.
Mr. Vice Mayor, what would you like to do? E and F?
E and F.
Is there any other item that any member would like to take off for individual consideration? If not, is there a motion to, to adopt the consent agenda, item nine, A through H, with the exception of E and F? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Consent agenda is adopted with, with the exception of item E and F. Mr. Vice Mayor, what is your question on E and F?
It looks like, since we're going to get a presentation from Human Resources Director on this, I, I'd like to know why we're doing this. It's more days off. We're shutting the City Hall down between Christmas and New Year's. I'm concerned about lack of service to citizens if needed. I mean, I'm not sure we ever shut the City Hall down for an entire week. So I'm, I'm not sure why we're doing this.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I can answer some of that and Lisa's coming up as well. So this issue has come up frequently from city staff asking about this because a lot of our surrounding cities do this already. Youngtown does, El Mirage does, Tolson does. That's three and a half off the top of my head. So we looked at those and as employees were frequently asking, to be honest, it's, it's mostly a dead week for staff. We don't have that much going on that week. Just to be honest, we don't have many citizens come in. I think we've actually looked at that before to see how many citizens came in that week. And to be honest, we have a lot of employees that take that week off anyway because they want to be with their families.
They take, take it off how? Vacation time or?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor, that's correct. They do. They already get some holiday time, of course, for Christmas and Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. So this would be for the days between. So we looked at that, of course, and we didn't, we didn't want to add just extra days. So currently full-time staff, depending on years of service, they get either two personal days or three, again, depending how long they've been here. And those expire at the end of the calendar year. So we put a survey out to the employees. If this is something they wanted to do, would they be willing to trade their personal days they already get now in exchange for this? And eighty-six percent of employees said yes, they would. The balance there though, sir, is that, so they're trading two days, but it depends how the calendar falls. Some years they would get off three days. So some years it would cost you as little more as one additional day. Some years it would cost as many as two, two or three, just depending how the calendar falls on the dates.
But what, what are personal days used for now? Are they off for doctors or?
Anything they want to, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Race, kids graduation or whatever.
Anything whatsoever, sir. The one thing with, one thing with person.
Can't do it? They're going to have to take the time only off from Christmas and New Year's?
They, they would trade, trade them out. That was our suggestion, sir, yesterday, to trade those out. That way we're not just adding three or five additional days, but rather trading those. Because the personal days they have now, one, they don't accrue and they don't pay out upon resignation or termination. They have to be used every year by, by December thirty-one. They still get their person, their vacation time, their sick time, they always have. Personal days are a different classification, if that makes sense.
So my kids graduating is I can't go because I'm going to be off between Christmas and New Year's instead?
You would use a vacation day instead, sir. Personal days are a different type of time off than vacation days are, sir.
Okay, explain the difference.
Sure. So the main one I would say, sir, is vacation days accrue. Vacation days accrue up to a certain cap, of course, and they pay out upon resignation or termination. Personal days do not. Personal days, you get two a year or three if you've been here a long time. And they have to be used annually by December thirty-first. After that, they expire and it starts over again. And they don't pay out upon resignation or termination, where vacation time does. I would say that is the main difference, sir. And we structured winter closure leave the same way. Same thing here, this time would not accrue and it wouldn't pay out upon resignation or termination. So somebody leaves, they don't get paid out for it. So that's the idea, of course, is to let the people spend more time with their families.
So we hire somebody on December fifteenth, they get vacation days immediately between Christmas and New Year's?
Now, now that I could, well, there's a difference between personal and vacation. So on vacation, it depends. They have to be here for a while. Of course, they don't get it all upfront. Of course, it's been so long they're here. They get more time throughout the year per pay period. As far as the personal days, I'm, I'm going to be honest, I don't know. Lisa, do you know as far as on that goes on personal days? Do they get them on day of or I, I don't know?
It's on the calendar year. So for example, I recently started on the ninth of October. I will not receive personal days until two thousand twenty-four.
So you'll be sitting here working in City Hall all by yourself between Christmas and New Year's?
Not if this is approved.
To that.
Hi, this will be for two thousand twenty-four.
To that, I'm sorry, to the, thank you, Lisa. To that question, Mr. Vice Mayor, if this is approved, it wouldn't apply until Christmas of twenty-four, not Christmas of twenty-three. And the reason why is some people have used their personal days this year, some have not. So we want to be equal with everyone. And also right now the rec has, they do some sign-ups that week, so they would change their schedule based off this as well. So we want to be fair to rec as well.
So in two thousand twenty-four, what happens to the person who doesn't have rights to them? Are they going to be sitting in City Hall all by themselves?
As far as.
As far as personal?
December first of two thousand twenty-four.
Two thousand twenty-four, under this policy, there aren't any more personal days.
Right.
There's just time off between Christmas and New Year's and they would get time off between Christmas and New Year's. If they were hired on December first or December fifteenth.
I was just told they wouldn't.
Next year they would.
Next year.
Under the new policy, if they're hired just before Christmas, they would get the time between Christmas and New Year's, that week, they would get that week off. Under the way this policy.
If they're hired and they quit January one, it's okay.
Be a good deal.
I, I, I struggle with this entire concept of shutting City Hall down during Christmas and New Year's.
Can I give you a counterbalance to that comment, Vice Mayor? Having been a city manager of a city that has utilities, I would say you can't close. If you had utilities, I would say you can't. Because people have to come in and pay their water bill, their gas bill, you get the idea. But in a city that does not, just to be honest, we, we have very few citizens coming that week at all, from my experience. If we had utilities, that's different. If people were coming to pay bills, that's different. But in a city that we don't, we just don't have many, that many come in, just to be honest, just from what I see, sir.
In my business, it's a catch-up week. All the year-end stuff done, we can get caught up, things cleaned up, straightened up, things have been put off. Everybody gets, then we start, everything's done and it starts next year fresh. I, I I, I struggle with the concept of closing the entire City Hall down for a week.
I understand, sir. And just to clarify, it would be all city offices. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be just City Hall.
It would be all, it would be the entire city.
All the city offices, yes, sir. One exception.
City would be shut down for the week.
All the city offices would. One exception for that would be, of course, Public Works for essential duties such as park trash cans, street sweeping.
Give them time and a half.
That's correct, sir. Only, only on a skeleton crew, though. It wouldn't be the whole, the whole crew.
What's this going to cost us?
The cost is going to equate to one to two additional paid days off due to the exchange for the personal days.
Okay. What's that, what's it, what's it, what's a day cost to some wages?
It's going to depend on the person's hourly pay rate, what their salary amounts.
We ought to know what, what, what it costs, what's the cost to City Manager every day we have employees here?
I'm going to suggest, we have questions, obviously, that have been raised by Vice Mayor that need to be vetted fully. So it would be better to take these items, bring them back. They don't have, this doesn't have, does not need to be done today.
Agreed, sir.
So let's bring these back, but with a full presentation, not on consent, on cost and all, you know, the answer, you know, the questions have been asked. We'll bring, we'll bring it back and maybe the council can have a full discussion.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind, sir, if we get Councilman Raymond Watson's question too?
Well, we can, we can, we can do all this if you want to spend more time on it tonight.
No, no, that's fine. I just, I just don't want to miss anything.
I think we're not going to go forward tonight.
Agreed.
We don't have a full presentation that answers all these questions. And so I think it needs to be, it needs to be brought back to council.
It's certainly no rush, sir.
Something we need to talk about before we bring it back, but.
I'd like to just get an idea of, you know, if they're hiring a new employee and they get two vacation days. Is that correct, Mayor?
No, ma'am. There, there's a difference between vacation days and personal days. Right, right now they get two personal days.
Okay, so but I'm brand new. I'm going to get Christmas off because we decided this. How many vacation days do I have? I'm thinking the person who's got a doctor's appointment, they need to pick up and do it. How do you do that?
Well, well, they, they also have sick time and vacation time and those are earned per pay period. They're not front-loaded, but they earn so many per pay period, so they build up throughout the year and they can use those as soon as they earn them. But they, so there's vacation time, sick time and personal time, but personal is separate as it doesn't accrue.
Do you have something you'd like?
Be glad to.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, my, my only question, how I would just do when you look at it, just the impact of the major there is police escort when they go to the base that occurs. And then this year, my understanding is concert that's going to occur on Saturday the thirtieth. I know that occurs on Wigwam property, but potential for noise complaints and just how that hits, let it out or just, just
Be glad to, sir.
All right. So bring this, we'll table this for now. Mr. City Attorney, do we need to do anything special to table this? Bring it back in the next meeting as a regular business item?
Mr. Mayor, I think.
We need a motion?
Normally we would do a motion, yes.
Okay, well, somebody move to table items E and F to be brought back at our normal meeting in probably in January now because I don't think we're going to meet in December.
January seventeenth, sir.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
And one question for discussion.
Okay. No. We just can't decide it. We couldn't apply it to this year because we have things that are already going on that we need employees in the rec and other places. So it just can't be done, it could not be done this year for that, for that reason. But we don't have to make this rule change before the year starts. All right. So all this, let's move to table these two items to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will probably be in January. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the items are tabled for our next meeting. That brings us into our normal business agenda. Item ten, we've already dealt with ten A, so now we'll go with ten B. And this, which is a resolution for the call of election for March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. That's fine. So is there a second?
Second.
Just, we're going to have, just, we don't have to have discussion, but I want to make sure the council understands what we're doing. The, there are requirements in between the Constitution, Title sixteen and Title nine, that the issue of the charter must go to the electorate in March. And so this is a required step if we're going to consider having a charter adopted to have this election called. So we're doing one of those required steps. Everybody, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, a motion is adopted. Next item is an ordinance to establish procedures for the March election. And again, this is a requirement of this legal system that we have between the Constitution, Article nine or Title nine and Title sixteen. We need to adopt a set of procedures and that's what this ordinance does. So is, is there a motion to adopt these procedures? Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Procedures are adopted. Now we have a date to elect you or elect your charter and a procedure for elect.
This was a headline today in the West Valley View or maybe the Independent. Said Litchfield voters accept charter, but we haven't voted on that yet. We voted to have them go, put it together and March is the exact vote. So that was the wrong headline.
The citizens voted to authorize the drafting of a charter.
Right, but the actual charter will be passed in March. Yeah. So the headline was, headline was wrong, right? I'm sure some people.
It was at least misleading. At least misleading. All right.
And
next item.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, before we move on, if I could, our, that ordinance has an emergency clause on it. And to my ear, it sounded like there were no nays, but is the record or in reflect that it was a, in a unanimous vote? Or should we do a roll call on that one to make sure we had three fourths?
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, this doesn't tell me that, but yeah. Sorry about that. We should do a roll call, yes.
Councilmember Claire?
Yay.
Councilmember Donahue?
Yeah.
Councilmember James? Councilmember Romac? Councilmember Raymond Watson? Vice Mayor Faith? Mayor Schof? It's unanimous.
Okay, let the, let the record so reflect. All right. Next item is the Commercial Services Agreement with Cox Communication. All right, next item is the commercial services agreement with Cox Communications. This is, uh, who's coming back from last meeting. Mr. Frok.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good evening again. Uh, last month, uh, we brought forward the commercial services agreement with Cox Communications to provide a fiber internet circuit system to Litchfield Square. And, um, the council had questions related to the commercial services agreement, but also some greater, um, internet service issues that had really nothing to do with Litchfield Square, per se. And so the representative from Cox was able to, um, work with the subs, so the CS.
I think the concern was that we were, we were paying more for Cox service in the park, in Litchfield Square. And we're being asked to pay more for that service when we already do not receive good service from Cox in many areas of the city. So it's hard to say, yeah, we want to spend more money to have Cox come into Litchfield Square when where Cox is currently serving a lot of our citizens, we just do not have good service.
Thank you, Mayor. Very good point. So the, the matter was tabled, and then subsequent to that, uh, Matthew and I were able to meet on two separate occasions with the appropriate Cox representatives. Both are here, uh, tonight to make a presentation as needed to council. So what we're offering or suggesting tonight is, uh, we went back, like I said, that was, uh, Cox representatives, and we're presenting two options for council for providing the fiber internet circuit for Litchfield Square. Option one would be the $1,000 a month, um, service fee that, um, was presented last month. And then another option, uh, that we didn't, did not have, uh, at your October meeting was a little bit lower, uh, rate, uh, $605 a month. The difference between option one and option two is, um, option one is, uh, a system that's set up specifically for an independent from the rest of the service for the city, but specific to Litchfield Square with hopefully uninterrupted service. Option two, the, the lower rate, $605 per month, could result in slower internet service to the square, and so it's really up to the council, um, what you feel is best for a commercial services agreement for the square. The staff recommendation is to go with option one. We feel it's a dedicated service. There's some infrastructure that, um, Cox Communications has agreed to build up, uh, to deliver the fiber network up into the, the park that I mentioned, the park site. And so, um, that would be our recommendation is to go with option one. We feel it'd be better service for the square. Our intent is that once the park is built and we start to move a lot of Trisha's, uh, festivals and events up to the square, that we'll have food vendors that are going to be relying on internet service for transactions, for, uh, vending, uh, and transactions for, uh, food and beverage sales for events. And, uh, we might have other need for internet, if it's a movie in the park, things of that nature. So that's, uh, my presentation. Again, um, we have two representatives from Cox, actually three representatives from Cox that, um, can address the overall internet service elsewhere in the city, uh, as well as the commercial services agreement that I just presented. I will say, the second meeting that Matthew and I had with the, the Cox field representative on the, with respect to some of the intermittent, intermittent service and concern that council expressed relative to, um, internet service, um, throughout the city, we had identified four broad areas of the city. One was, uh, roughly this area. We didn't give specific addresses of, of, uh, known, um, concern for internet service. Another one was over west of Litchfield Road, north of Wigwam. And then two locations, east of Litchfield Road, north of Wigwam. The, the second meeting that we had, uh, with Cox, uh, their team looked at, um, the, those geographic areas. They felt, they made some adjustments to their system and repairs. Uh, there was some damaged feeder cables that have since been repaired, and so they could probably give a better technical answer than I could on, on the service that they're providing to our residents. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
The report says that Cox is going to do about $14,000 worth of improvements to bring the service to the park. And GMP 6, we're asked to approve $3,000 to bring Wi-Fi services to the park. What's the difference?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, so there's some, uh, and I'll probably defer this to, um, Aiken Gardner. I'll try to answer the question. So there's some, uh, basic backbone infrastructure that needs to be brought up to Litchfield Square Park site. That's the 14,000, and then the GMP 6 entry, the, I think he said is 33,000, would be to, um, actually bring, um, additional equipment that would not be owned by Cox, it would be owned by the city, that would be poles with directional, um, apparatus on them to focus the actual internet, um, into the park, so that people outside of, uh, Litchfield, uh, Square Park would not be using the, the Wi-Fi that we would be providing as a service. So in the future, let's use Lot 3 as an example. Once that property gets developed, they'll have their own system for their tenants for Wi-Fi. The, what we're trying to present tonight would be specifically for internet service for, and Wi-Fi network for Litchfield Square Park itself.
That, that brings up an interesting issue I hadn't even thought about before. Wha- what's the incentive for the businesses to go out and subscribe to Wi-Fi when they can latch onto the city's Wi-Fi?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, and I'm probably not the best person to, I'll try to answer that, but the, the poles that I mentioned, we can, the IT experts, which I'm certainly not one of them, would, would focus the, um, devices into the actual park site and not direct it, say, out towards the individual lots, like they wouldn't direct the, um, the facilities to City Hall or Lot 3. So it would be trying to provide that network inside the limits of the, of the park itself.
A simple Wi-Fi amplifier, couldn't pick that up and bring it into a business and?
I'm probably going to defer that to the Cox representatives so that they can give you the right terminology.
So, so we're still, I think the, the hangup that I had on this originally was five-year contract, $1,000 a month. Cox gave us a contract, it's over 100 pages long. Tiny, teen, tiny print. Here's to the attorney I hope hasn't read and built this for. I know I have it written. I don't know what's in it, and I don't know why this thing can't be linked down to a few. I'm not going to agree to 100 pages. Tiny print, nobody's read. They struggle with the concept of a five-year obligation, $1,000. Technology that next 12 months, we have obsolete. They struggle with the concept of putting Wi-Fi in the park. Free Wi-Fi in the park to begin with. My cellphone makes a great Wi-Fi hotspot, and I worked off of that with no problem, and most people have cellphones with Wi-Fi in them. And, and I, I struggle with it, with the whole concept, you know, and I still struggled also with the concept of spending. I haven't pulled, been able to pull this number out of the documents anywhere. Putting in cellphone charger stations, outdoor cellphone charger stations in this park, that are probably going to last, if they, I hope they last longer than the bathroom fixtures that we're replacing on a monthly basis. So, I mean, I, I mean, there's a, there's a limit, is, is to how, how advanced and how technical this information needs to be. So we're talking 60,000 over five years, another 33,000 in, in equipment, $100,000 to put Wi-Fi in the park. I, I'm struggling with the whole concept. So far, I'm not convinced, so far, I'm a no, unless somebody can tell me why it needs to be, be done.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, just quickly on the charging stations, um, thank you for bringing that up. We actually discussed that one of our team meetings, probably a, a month or two ago. And those, those will be removed. They're, they're not installed, they will be removed as part of GMP 6. I know that probably doesn't address all of your issues.
Feel better that there's been some reason, reasonableness come to this process, uh, because I still, we haven't even got to GMP 6 yet, where I'm looking at, uh, what was it, $4, $35 a square foot for autumn gold cement? $10 for regular gray cement. I look down to the numbers on this GMP 6, and I just cringe. Uh, you know, $20 a square foot for 750 a square foot Bellegarde Holland red pavers installed. I know our price is ridiculous, but I, I'm cringing, there, there's, but thousands of dollars worth of ice in this, water and ice in this, in this GMP 6. So we haven't got to that yet, so. I, you know. It's kind of. You know, this is part of the reason why I asked Paige for the chart that she gave. She's going on a path of just always there, or we're going to spend it, and we got it, and I, I think we need to be a little more conservative than some of the stuff that I've seen. That's why so much. Thanks.
Mayor, um, we have three members from Cox here. If you don't have any questions for me, Melissa, Jamie, and Mark, um, can probably do a better job than I could on, on getting into some of the, the nitty-gritty on the details of the commercial services agreement, if you'd like one of them to speak.
I'm sure we're going to have other questions. I haven't heard, well, do we lose Councilman Claire?
I'm right here.
Councilman Claire, do you have any questions? Because I think you were one of the ones that was very concerned about this last meeting.
Yeah, I, I thought the cost was high, and, and, and I, I've talked to Matthew about that, and it's the government rate, and it's a, it's a standalone pipe coming in that doesn't affect any of the residents. I don't like the way it's being presented, because if we go with the non-standalone, it's, it's to hurt the other residents that live alongside it. Because they will have less bandwidth to get to them, is my understanding. I, I, I somewhat agree with Councilman Faith here, or Vice Mayor Faith, because this cost, anyone that has a cellphone or has something that, that they're going to be doing, has some type of cell service on it. We would just be supplementing them from not using, uh, any of their own data here. I, I think free Wi-Fi is great. I mean, maybe that we can use it at the library or something along those lines, but I don't know that we need this expense at this time for a park that's not delivered. And maybe we revisit it in a year when it's, uh, when it's time, but I, I just don't know that this cost makes sense.
Councilman Claire brings up a good, a good point in terms of timing, uh, whether or not this item is something that needs to be done now, or if it's something that we could easily add in in the future.
Mayor, um, I'm fairly new to Litchfield Square, so the, somebody had made a decision a few months before I started managing the project that providing the, the free internet service to the, to the park. I don't think the, we would like you to make a decision tonight on option one, but I don't think it needs to be, that decision needs to be made tonight. The, the park will not open until 2024. Part of my presentation on GMP 6 will be to give you a, I'll just tell you the date now. We're, we're working in concert with Aiken Gardner and all of our subcontractors to finish this project by Labor Day weekend of 2024, so we're less than a year away. The park is coming online here pretty quick, and that's why we thought it was important to try to get the commercial services agreement, approved, reviewed, and approved by council.
It's, it's just one of those items that may well, well be that if we use the park for a while, we would have some idea of whether we needed to have this, this particular service.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, one, one second, Councilman Claire. Councilman James?
So just two, two questions. One, I guess, uh, to Mr. Frok's point, uh, it, this predates me, um, being on the council. Can anybody provide the genesis of when this value-added service was provided, was determined by, I'm assuming, the council?
It wasn't, it wasn't determined by the council, it was determined by staff.
Okay.
I'm going to assume it was probably staff named Woody, but, I don't, I mean, he, he was kind of the architect of some of these.
So then the fol, the follow-on question comes from an infrastructure standpoint. Is it one of those things that needs to be done now before you start?
That's why I was, I was going to ask right now. Do we need to, we don't need to do it now. We have a, we, we have within the restroom building, we have a, we have a place for all the electronic equipment, and in some cases, there's wires coming in and out, and I don't know whether this is something that we have to do something about it now as we're going to build that.
Yeah. I'll speak, make one comment on the restroom building, and then I'd like to probably turn it over to Melissa, and I can come back up here, obviously, I'm not going anywhere, but, so the, there's a restroom building that will be built at the very northwest corner of the park. And geographically, the, the restroom buildings will be located, restroom building will be located on the southeast corner of Village Parkway and La Loma Avenue, so a couple blocks north of City Hall. Within that restroom building, there will be a comm room or communications room where we'll have all of the equipment for, for the internet service, for Wi-Fi, and, and all the circuitry and everything that needs to go into it. So we will be building that restroom building in early 2024, so we, we, we have, I think, a little bit of time, but we're also have a general contractor that's looking at keeping their momentum going with the, the overall construction of, of the square. Maybe we could get Melissa up and have her speak a little bit, and then I can come back up as needed. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Happy to be here. Thanks for the time. I'm here to answer a lot of those concerns, or at least clarify some of these things for you. Um, first and foremost, um, our construction process, from when you sign an agreement to when you actually install, is around six months typically. So we don't want to tear up that beautiful pavement that you've just laid down. So, and that $14,000 to $15,000 we're discussing is our investment, Cox's investment as a company, from our nearest fiber tie point to bring it all the way to that D-mark he just discussed in the restroom, and we're not charging you for that at all. So it is a completely separate situation from conduit you may be laying, um, on property to lower. The initial cost was closer to $45,000 to $60,000 if we were to lay all the conduit to the two different areas, amphitheater, the restroom. But that was lowered to 15 from our network to your D-mark with our equipment, which we'll then hand off to your equipment. Specifically, what we are quoting is internet, and it's fiber internet. There's two options of fiber internet that you're considering this evening. That is not what you have at your home today. What you have at your home today is coax transport. It's completely different. It's not the same whatsoever. Um, in addition to that, my colleague addressed those issues, which she can speak to if you have questions on that. Um, the fiber circuits are two options that you're looking at. To Councilman Claire's point, I believe he had some deeper dives on this. The Cox optical internet, which they are recommending, is used by pretty much every government, large government city that is in our footprint. It is a dedicated symmetrical circuit. What that means is you get what you pay for, and it goes directly to you. The second option on here is a Cox fiber internet, which is also symmetrical. However, it's a shared service. So in the future, when they're bringing more fiber services to other businesses in the community, as well as, I think, on the, on the forecast, they're making a future investment to bring gigs, which is fiber service to the home, then you will see degradation if you have the second option on here. Essentially, a, a great analogy my manager brought to me. Then you will see degradation if you have the second option on here. Essentially, a, a great analogy my manager brought to me today is if you have a pipe within a bunch, a bunch of different users in it, that would be your Cox fiber internet. And if they all start using it at once, your water pressure will go down. However, with Cox optical internet, that will not happen because you are paying for a superior A-grade business level service. You get that one gig up and down, which you do want that higher upload speed, which you don't get on coax in order to do streaming, in order to do broadcast, in order to have the ability to allocate those, you know, bandwidths to different purposes if you choose to do so. We are not doing the Wi-Fi. That is not in my proposal, so I want to clarify that as well. My understanding is you have a different vendor who would be taking that internet circuit, you got your router, your firewall, your equipment to do your filtering. You could prioritize your traffic that way, making sure vendors get what they, what they pay for, what you want them to prioritize. And then you would have your other users having a smaller bandwidth and filter that content. That is, we pass our D mark and not what we're proposing. So, that other investment you're talking about likely is perhaps some of that, some of that equipment that makes it geographically wirelessly available in the park, and you would then focus it into that space. Does that make sense? They have coax today. Well, it's symmetrical versus, most folks in office space don't need the higher upload speeds. The, it's because of the use case. What you're choosing to use to do in the park, such as streaming, requires higher upload speeds. Would that be video streaming of a concert performance or a movie in the park? And whether you have all those number of users you're gonna see. The other reason a lot of folks in other cities choose to use the fiber circuit for these sorts of spaces is because if you have a large number of users that flood in for a big event, which is what you want, a big successful event where everyone's spending money and having a good time, then you have a lot of, of traffic that's now putting stress on the cellphone towers in the area, and you start seeing degradation. So, maybe now those vendors can't swipe their POS because when all those folks flood into the same geographic area, all of the service providers are now flooded with demand. Exactly. And you can't send a favorite photo you just took, your selfie. You're like, this is the best selfie ever, and I can't send it till I leave. That's because they don't have their Wi-Fi set up right. And when you can do it at the Cardinal Stadium, that's a Cox, uh, service provider there. It's because they have it balanced, load balanced, and they're making sure that everyone's getting their allotment, so they can send that out.
Trish, how do we, how do we deal with this now? Obviously, we don't have, we don't have dedicated Wi-Fi in the areas where we put on our festivals. We have people doing first point-of-sale transactions, I assume, during, in those festivals. So, how does that work?
Um, my understanding is they're working up their own consoles or they're stepping into libraries. They don't have access to.
The library, the library Wi-Fi is off, is off of fiber, right? I think it is.
It is, yeah.
Because the festival move, the festival move over there, we have that, those large.
And there may, and there may be limitation to how far this Wi-Fi obviously will reach based on what I just described. So, if they're further away, they may not be able to reach the library Wi-Fi. Just to make you aware of that.
Councilman James?
So, just, just trucker here.
I understand all that. That's why I cut you a lot of slack.
I know, but I understand, I understand this. So, like option A, you get this dedicated, you know, geo-fenced area that's dedicated to the park, that's gonna support the festivals essentially as a value add to the citizens, to the festivals.
Right, well, and.
Do that, do that now because it takes time to run that wire. You don't want to be doing this after you get the buildings and get the roads in and all that. So, that's why the, that's why it's coming to us now, option one. Option two, you don't do that, you go with the degraded, you go with the degraded service, and then as more buildings come in, or maybe some, condos or residents, you just, you're just gonna keep drawing down, drawing down.
Right. And the, and also you, you have a cabinet of, of equipment that's also, you know, not necessarily as secure as you would have this Cox optical internet as well. Correct, a shared cabinet. That is correct.
Okay.
It's still symmetrical and still fiber, but it's a shared resource as opposed to a dedicated circuit.
So, so what does happen then?
So, so if it's a five to seven, when you're having your fabulous event and everyone's coming home from work and also turning on their TVs to watch the football game, that's when you might see some, some issues. If they're all starting to stream stuff and they're also on that same fiber, then that's when that would happen.
And then what happens as the buildings and the residents come in and they start, you know, you know, the first lot that goes in and their five tenants all get Cox business internet for their businesses, then that, does that, that's.
So, if you do the first option, the Cox optical internet, you're gonna still get what you pay for, and then we simply bring in more fiber and more bandwidth and more rings as needed. If you do the second option, then you'll see degradation, potentially, if they all have that, that shared multi-tenant CFI, the Cox fiber internet, then you would see that degradation when more users are on at, at the same time.
Brown, if you want to have a conversation, please go outside.
But again, what I'm proposing is the internet alone, not that Wi-Fi piece. That's a different vendor. So, what I'm proposing is straight one gig fiber internet, two different solutions to choose from. And then you can use it however the council wishes to use it, past that D mark. Councilman Claire, I believe, has a comment or question, so.
Councilman Claire.
Okay, a couple of things. One, so all you're doing is bringing things to the D mark. Anything beyond the D mark, which is where you deliver it to us, is our responsibility to create the Wi-Fi product to get out to the residents or whoever's gonna have access to it.
Correct, because that was the scope of work that I was requested to bid on, and so that is what I have bid on. And in addition, I just want to also comment about the lengthy like lengthy contract. That was requested by your attorney and our attorneys, and they went back and forth and then agreed to that large fifty-five page document. So, our standard document is three to four pages, which is what I initially started with. And your outside counsel, not this gentleman, but your outside counsel, came up with those lovely colorful pages, which I sent to our counsel, and it went back and forth for several months, and nobody had mentioned any concerns about price until a couple of months ago. So, this has been a journey for me as well.
So, second question for you is that last month, this, uh, service description was one fifty to a gig. This is.
Yeah, that was an, a, an error that I apologize for, that I didn't know was happening in our system. It's one gig that I'm proposing, and I had that corrected as well. It was a glitch in our system.
Got it. So, now we know that it, it's a dedicated amount for a full, full speed. If we decide to table this for a year until we have an idea of when it's gonna be used, what are the potential increased costs to have you here from now and do the same product?
Great question. So, actually, the bid typically, when I do my estimates, is only good for six months, so we're honoring that outside that window at this moment in time. Uh, tip, if you were to table it, uh, then I would have to then at that point go and do a new estimate, and I have no way of knowing what that cost would be. As you know, construction costs have continued to increase and so forth, so I cannot predict what that cost would be. Then I have a whole internal process that I go through every single time for any city and any customer, where I have to go back to finance, say, here is the proposed service. Here is the contract term. Here is the ROI. Will Cox cover those costs or not? And that's how I do that. And then I come back to you and say, great news, we're waiving your activation, your construction, and your installation. Hopefully, that's what I say to you. Um, and then again, that's a six-month process, and we may have to now bore entrench in your beautiful new pavement in order to add a conduit through that tie point area, which I would like to avoid for you.
And we would as well. So, my next question is the bore entrench that you're talking about delivering to the, 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 uh, facility. Yes, ma'am. So, do you have to do any, any digging up of what's already been delivered to us as a finished product? Or are we gonna have to go into a finished product at, at that time? Or it, do you have a straight line to get there without damaging anything that's already constructed?
So, I don't, I, I, at the time of when we proposed it, there was gonna be done simultaneously with your construction. So, I don't believe so. I'd have to go back and look at it because this, again, has been going on for about nine months, these discussions. So, I really don't know. I'd have to go pull up the actual design plan, but what I can tell you is that the, the initial, yeah, he can speak to that, I'm sure. Okay. But on property, all the, in the road from our tie point, okay. Uh, you're talking about on property or from the Cox? On property. So, on property, you, was being handled by the contractor. What I'm discussing is from the Cox network on to, to the, to the right of way. So, you guys laid the empty conduit for us to use if needed. So, that was to, to lower the cost.
So, we have conduit in, in the square.
Correct.
Have to get your wire to the conduit.
Correct. And then our, our equipment goes in, and then your equipment goes with it.
So, if somebody in this project, uh, one of our businesses, a new, a new building gets built, they want fiber. They can't get it unless they give you fifteen thousand dollars to run.
It really depends on the circumstance, but yeah, oftentimes in our very large builds, if it's a lengthy build, yes, they often pay for construction if they don't have enough revenue of services. So, it really depends on the scenario. If they're a large customer and they order enough services, then we cover the costs. It varies.
Us to get their service, Cox are gonna get service there.
Coax has been.
Did I answer your questions? Councilman Claire?
Yes, ma'am, you did. Thank you.
Was it another councilman also have a question? Okay. 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 So, excellent question. So, again, I can, I can shed a little more light on that, but that would not be what Cox is doing. You have another vendor, I believe, was proposed Blue Wave. I'm not familiar with them. So, that would be past our D mark, but what we do, we do have other services similar, so I can describe what that would look like potentially. But again, we're not doing that. So, I want to make sure that's clear to everyone, is that they would then put on the equipment up on your poles likely surrounding the area, and then they can point them. And so, geographically, the area within the park is the only area the signal is available. So, once you step outside that boundary they've created, you're gonna, you're not gonna get the Wi-Fi access. So, they're gonna point it all interior. So, what they have here is they probably wanted to keep it open and keep it for the public. You would do the opposite of that, and of course, you'd want to, you know, limit that, so. The park, just the park.
Five years, hundred thousand dollars just for the park.
Yeah, and that's totally up to you how you use it. Again, if you want to charge your vendors when they rent the space, that's an option to, to defer costs. But again, I'm just proposing the internet, and that is the state contract rate that we charge every single government entity in Arizona. Again, that was your legal counsel and my legal counsel was def- I, I also would prefer that, but I spent a great bill of time going back and forth, getting them, uh, all, saying all as well, so.
It was our legal counsel. How much have we spent on that?
See, you could have had internet this whole time.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, um, so you have a simplified contract that links to online terms. The reason it's so long is because I think the city's request was, we don't want to link to online terms, print them out and attach it, so we know what they are and they don't change over time. So, it's the same length of contract. The document is longer because you don't have to go to a website to see it. But I, I think a lot of internet contracts, right? I mean, we, we all sign at home short internet contracts that are actually long if you follow all the links.
So, I think that's what's going on. She said she had a simple contract, wasn't so simple because it said, go see, go read, go read the online stuff.
Right, well, yeah. Yeah, well, if you think that's complicated, you see the state contract.
So, I, I mean, I think we, ob- obviously, we haven't built this yet. We don't know all that's coming. We know we have an arts and crafts festival every year, but we're also gonna have a band shell. And we don't know how many different activities. I think we, I mean, in my opinion, I think this is the latest and greatest for now. When, this will be built in a couple of years, obviously, but hopefully, hopefully. But regardless, we have to build for, for upcoming and what's going to come. And we hope that our park's loaded with activities, right? So, we know what we have, but we certainly have to bet on what we're, what we're going to have, which is lots of action and lots of activity, I guess.
Yeah, fingers crossed, absolutely.
I mean, that, that's our ultimate plan, right? We want people to come.
Right.
And go home, but we want them to come.
One, one other clarification, which was noted on here, but I also wanted to verbalize to everyone, you will not pay for this until it's turned on. You're not gonna be paying for this, for this whole next year until September first, is my understanding as a target, um, installation. You don't pay until it's installed. So, I want to make sure that that's also clear.
So, Aiken Gardner is gonna, is gonna finish the conduit either way into the, wherever we build the buildings. And that, that part of the conduit is gonna be done.
Correct.
Not, notwithstanding this. We could pull, we could pull this fiber whenever we decide to do that, and it's gonna get pulled through something that's already completed now, right?
For on property, yes.
Well, we're, we're already done with everything outside the square. We're not gonna, we're not building anything new out there, so whatever you have to tear up today to get fiber into that conduit, you're gonna have to tear it up tomorrow.
Yeah, unless, I, I wouldn't know unless they place conduit proactively, but yeah, potentially.
That's, that is true. So, whether we do this today or we don't, we do this in a year, it really doesn't make any difference.
Right. Just beware that there'll be additional six months for construction.
Well, it could be, it could be more costly, it could be a lot of things, but. But we don't have, it's not something we have to do today. What we do have to do today is we have to finish that conduit. Conduit's gotta go into that building so we can pull something in there in the future if we need it. But that, we're gonna do that anyways, part of GMP six. So, it's not, i- if the council wishes to postpone this decision, we can do that. Uh, or we can make the decision and, and move forward. So, which, what, which way, which direction do you guys want to go in?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Councilman Claire.
You know, she said in, in, uh, Marsha, I think her name was, I apologize, um, said that this bid is good for six months. Why don't we table it for four months and see where we're at? And come back and see, and that'll give us a timeline to stay within the quote that we have, then if we decide to push it forward.
Yeah, I, this has started like February or actually December of last year. We have way past the six-month mark. So, just to clarify, I'd have to start all from scratch when you decided to reconvene, and I can't predict what that would look like.
So, this is something we have to do. We're just saying, are we gonna do it with Cox, right? We have to do this.
We don't have a lot of choice. We don't have a lot of choice in we do it with, to be honest with you, but the question is, do we really have to do it? I don't know. I mean, we, if, if we held a fest- a festival or two down there at some point and we'd see what, you know, let's see how it works with everybody using their, their, uh, cell phones and I, I said, I'm gonna suspect that if we use that, if we use that park much festivals and large festivals, then we're gonna need this service. That's my suspicion. Yeah. I just don't know. I don't know if we need to make the decision tonight, but I think we're gonna need the service. Yeah, please. Well, what we don't know is how much they're using the library Wi-Fi, which changes the, the, the questions whether cell phones going to cell towers are sufficient. And we don't know that because people aren't certainly using that. They're not, they're not getting to the internet through that method.
So, library broadcasting Wi-Fi out to the street? It's, it's just like outside your house. If I go outside your house, I can get your Wi-Fi.
If it's that password protected, yeah. Or if you know the password.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
Did I help, hopefully, answer some questions at least about what's, what's on here and.
I, I think I can put this tonight, if you're looking for that direction.
Yeah, it's, it either, we need a motion to move forward, so.
I make a motion to move forward.
I mean, to move forward to, to ultimately utilize this technology.
Question, well, the question is, do you want to, the, the question is before the council is whether to approve the commercial services agreement with Cox Communication for internet service for Litchfield Square. So, there needs to be a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we motion, I motion that we, uh.
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to approve option one as presented forth by staff.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there further discussion on the council? All right, I don't see any. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilman Claire, how do you vote?
Nay.
All the, all those who say nay? All right, so the motion fails, uh, three to four, so we will have to revisit this in the future.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome. Aiken Gardner, main thing is get the conduit, make sure the conduit's there. Okay, next item is introduction of ordinance related to the Thomas Plan, uh, development. Mr. Broke, you're the presenter?
I am.
City manager has pushed it off on you.
Yeah, my lucky night.
It is your lucky night.
I get to sit next to Keith all day, and then I get to, Matthew gets to give me the Thomas for, for the tonight. Mayor and council, this is a, a request to introduce an ordinance relative to a plan development or PD for a product known as the Thomas. This is the existing church site located on the northeast corner of Indian School Road and Old Litchfield Road not far from this facility. You've had some previous action and discussion that I've presented over the last, um, nine or ten months. Uh, we've been working, uh, Matthew and I and Keith very closely and our, our legal counsel with the applicant and owner who's here tonight. We've settled on, um, We've settled on moving forward with what's called a plan development. It's a zoning overlay. The existing zoning of the property is PF or Public Facility. And that relates back to when the, the site was developed years ago as a church. The owner is requesting the PD overlay, so the underlying zoning would stay in effect. And we would, from a land use perspective, I'm also the city planner, would regulate the land uses under the, both the PD overlay. There's a booklet, a narrative booklet that's attached as part of the packet with details of the project. There's a site plan as part of the PD as well as the land uses that are allowed under the existing PF zoning. At one of my first meetings back with you on January 18th of this year, I presented the project and council on a five-two vote directed staff to keep working on the project as a PD. Procedurally, we need to have an ordinance, so tonight would be introducing the ordinance to you for a approval of a planned development for the Thomas. As I mentioned, there's some backup materials as part of the packet. Depending on your pleasure tonight with the ordinance, I would come back at a later date and request that you actually adopt the ordinance. There's some cleanup work that we would do with the applicant between now and, we're looking at the January meeting to bring the PD back, so. I'm happy to answer any questions that the, the council may have. And again, the property owner slash applicant is here as well to answer any questions that the council may have tonight on the ordinance.
Questions in council?
My voice might, might turn tonight, huh? I've got a few questions. On page 278, there's repeated references to Maricopa County getting whatever roads or rides away that needs to be done. Why is Maricopa County involved in this process? Ethical financial assurance requirements subject to review and approval of Maricopa County dedication of. Your right of way to Maricopa County, 278 in our packet, 278 of the packet.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you talking about 16A, sir?
It's 10 of, 10 of 11 on page, it's called 10 of 11 on page 278.
Okay. I believe, it is on 16A.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't understand why it goes from paragraph 13th into the preceding page. It starts out 16A at the top of the next page. Is there? That's.
John, he's, he's talking about section 16A.
Exhibit, exhibit D to the ordinance, stipulations and conditions of rezone. It goes nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, then it goes 16A. And then we start talking about Maricopa County.
Right, that's right.
Is there a page missing or something?
You wanna comment on the, on the county question?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I believe the answer is, so this is something that's been riding along with this project for over a year. And I think that particular language, you'll notice it's the city or Maricopa County. And I believe it, it's primarily that or is mostly there because of the, the discussion about the ride-in, ride-out and possible changes to the turn lanes. And if you remember, without going too far into what I think everybody's tired of talking about. But there was, there was also a sliver of Maricopa County. And so there was a lot of uncertainty about the jurisdiction there. It's very, a little triangular.
Okay.
Sliver thing.
So you, okay, why does it go from paragraph 13 then go to?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I can handle that one, sir. The reason why is this document, there will be some changes between this month and January is because we've been working for well over a year now on a PD document and a DA. And that's why. Some of that language you see came from the DA for clarification. That's why you see why the number is off, Mr. Vice Mayor, is for there. Cause, cause that section came from the DA, because when we were gonna do a riro, we were gonna do a DA, but without a riro, we don't really need one. So that's, that's why, sir.
Bring this back to us. Can you give us a red line so we can see what changes remain?
Of course, sir.
Okay.
We'll make sure the number makes sense, too.
I got more questions.
You have more questions?
Oh, yeah, I got a whole bunch more. I, I would like when you, when you do this, on page 279, we talk about a seven-foot wall.
Yep.
And I think the agreement is there's gonna be a seven-foot wall there, but there is language written through here that says that they'll either construct a new one or they'll fix the old one to make it seven feet. I don't think that's technically possible to take a six-foot fence that's made out of four-inch block and turn that into a seven-foot engineered wall. So I, I just wanted to be clear that we're not approving something that's not engineering acceptable. It won't meet the UBC or anything else, so.
It won't have to meet our building code.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. And the language, it could be inferred that we're approving tweaking that wall to make it seven feet. And I don't wanna see somebody scavenging three-quarter inch plywood on that to make it seven feet tall.
Mayor, what'd you just say?
We could certainly add the city building code, sir.
What's that?
We could certainly add the city building code, sir.
Yeah, yeah, just, just clarify that it is, it's, it's not gonna be seven feet of that fence.
I agree, sir.
Okay.
And the reason we looked, if you know this wall, if you go over there, there are sections of it, it drops as you walk that wall. Like, there are sections of it now where I'm, I'm not the tallest guy in the world and I can see the people's backyards walking along this wall. That's why we addressed it this way.
My third comment is, and this is a question there to the council staff. We made the mistake with JDM on the corner of Wigwam and Litchfield not having some kind of decision rights in the ordinance if nothing happens. Should we have something in here, and, and I'm thinking out loud, you know, I'm not saying we should, but I'm, I'm asking. Have we considered that we're not building a box that we can't get out of that's gonna come back and haunt us if nothing ever happens and the current developer gives it to JDM and we gotta work with this document? But anyway, okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I think there was something along, along, along lines of what you're saying that was in the DA before. I'm fairly sure there was.
Okay.
So you're asking what if the developer doesn't build?
Doesn't do anything, yeah. Do, do, do we have a reversionary right?
We don't. We do not, and there's reasons for that.
Okay, so you're comfortable that's?
Correct.
Okay, okay. My fourth comment is, do we have something and do we want something from a noise standpoint? We're kind of in a situation, the city as a whole, and there's functions on the golf course, like there's the shot-off time. Do we want, as close as that is, this would be to get across the road and voice concern and back up to it? Do you want something a little stronger so that noise outside doesn't cross property lines?
As far as decibel limits or as far as business hours, sir?
Business hours, you've addressed. I'm wondering, music?
That would have a whole noise ordinance that we adopted because of the Google Jazz deal that probably applies to this.
It only starts at 10 o'clock, so I think, doesn't it?
It starts earlier.
9:30.
No, no, no.
If you have a, if you have a wedding.
This noise ordinance is different than that.
You gotta be in by 9:30.
All day, basically. You can't, you can't direct sound out in a way that, you know, that is, that's certain, we didn't take a look at what we, what we've already adopted.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I just wanna make sure that we don't have music till, you know, loud to, to take in here in their front rooms. I mean, I wake up now with, since it's cold, listening to the racetrack every Saturday and Sunday morning, so.
I understand, sir.
The fifth thing that my comment is, I don't think it was clear in here, and it is, I just missed it. Packet is, there's a lot to this packet, that this approval that we're given is not the indication of a future approval to build 4,200 square foot additional building. That's something that somehow has to. We've seen that project and how it's operating and we're happy with what's going on. And if we're unhappy with it, they don't have by right. Some of this language might, could be argued, he gives it by right. And maybe someplace else it takes away that, but it's something I just wanna make sure that we've, it's gotta come back to us before something else is done.
You're referring, that's, that's what we call phase two, Vice Mayor, that second building you're talking about?
But, yeah.
That's right. And we can certainly look at that to make sure we're covered. I do know that it requires a second traffic study at that time. When that, if that building is built, and of course, it would have to go through DRB, P and Z, et cetera.
Yeah, but, but if we have a project that, that the neighbors are, hopefully this is, hopefully this thing works out fantastic. But if we have a project that the neighbors are beating us up constantly because they're unhappy, do we want to keep the ability to prohibit that project from expanding even more? Or do we wanna give that up and just, I mean, it's, it's a question. Do we wanna give that up and just say, yeah, you have, you have it by right?
So if businesses have hours, right, isn't that, I mean, I suppose, you're worried about restaurant. A restaurant could cause a lot more noise or?
Well, I, I don't know what businesses will go in there. There is a list of businesses that go in there. I mean, I, there's a lot of neighbors around this that are not happy.
And, yeah, there's quite a few that didn't care either.
They're the ones most affected by it.
Yeah.
And I just wanna make sure that we're, we're doing what we can to protect them from the unknown. And that's always a fear. It's a fear of the unknown. And if it turns out that it is not a good project for the neighborhood, have we given them an absolute right to expand that use even greater with the 4,200 feet? Or have we, do they have to come back to the council to get that?
I think they probably, with the way it's presented now, they have a right to build that.
That's what I thought.
You have a right to what? I didn't hear that.
With the, with the exception of, if there was a problem that it created new traffic stuff.
Yes, that, that's kind of my take also, and so.
They could.
I think the mayor's right, because my reading of it is, is also that I think they have it, they'll have it by right, the way it's, the language is.
The only exception is, is whatever comes out of a traffic stuff.
And so my question, I.
Mr. City Attorney, if you wanna chime in and correct this.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, not, not correcting you at all, but what, one thing I would point out is this is zoning, right? Which is what Mr. Farquhar was saying is, this isn't the be-all, end-all of building a building, right? This is just the zoning. I think that building would be an approved use, right? Because it's, it's on the, the site plan and it's on the, the overall development plan. So you're creating custom zoning that includes custom allowed uses including that building. But, you know, you still need a building permit, right? And, and then there are additional things built in like traffic stuff. You have to do all the regular process. None of that stuff's cleared.
They have a right to build at the end of the day.
It, it's an approved use from a zoning perspective, yeah. But you're not waiving anything else, right? You're, you're only doing zoning right now. And, and there was some extra stuff when there was a development agreement, right? Some non-zoning kind of agreements in there, but that's gone now. This is really just a zoning ordinance, so if it's not zoning.
That's not the intent.
Right.
There's supposed to be a development agreement that goes with this zoning ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance was supposed to be to make sure that we had an ordinance and we had a development agreement. Development agreement being recorded against the land so that it's something we want to be enforceable down the road. If it goes to a different, a different property owner, they still have the development agreement on the property that specifies its uses. But this was the concept. Maybe that concept's wrong. This is what we were supposed to be doing, Matthew. Is that, is my understanding of this different than what, what we're doing? Or is this what you've brought to us?
Mr. Mayor, this is just the first reading of the ordinance to introduce the zoning action. As far as the DA, we discussed a lot that we, that maybe we didn't need a DA, as there was no riro, there could just be a PD overlay, as long as the PD overlay was binding.
At, at some level of detail, Mr. Mayor, this is probably a, a good executive session discussion, but the, you know, zoning also runs with land, you know, when a new, when a new, new owner comes in. And I think part of the ongoing discussion.
Maybe we should try to complete the rest of this agenda with the exception of this item, have our, have our executive session and then come back. I think that would probably be a good idea.
That sounds like one.
All right, so we're gonna, we're going to keep this, this introduction of this ordinance is gonna, is gonna be postponed long enough for us to take care of the, hopefully take care of the last couple of items. We may not be able to take care of.
I'll try and be quiet.
To be quiet. Then we'll go into executive session on the, on the, on item E, and then after that executive session, we'll come back and consider item E. So we're gonna go to item F now in the interim, which is a temporary construction easement for Litchfield Park Heritage Partners. This is allow them, this is to allow them to build the parking lot.
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so is there any need for discussion on this as part of, that they're building a parking lot on land that we still own?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or discussion from council? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that's approved. Then the next thing, which would take a little time, is GMP 6.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good evening again. This is what we hope to be the last guaranteed maximum price for GMP for the square, and this one would be GMP 6. You might recall that in 2021, the city entered into a, what's called a CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk with Aiken Gardner Construction. We have three esteemed representatives of Aiken Gardner here tonight. They can answer about any question that we council may have tonight. So over the last two years, we've been working, we, the city, have been working in concert with Aiken Gardner and their subcontractors on bringing the infrastructure forward on what's become initially known as city center and has been rebranded a couple of years ago as Litchfield Square. Briefly, some of the past GMPs that were done for the square, GMP 1 was approved back in June of 2021 by council. GMP 1 was a lot of the underground work, things that the general public would not see, underground infrastructure, the sewer system, costs associated with procuring long lead, lead time items, et cetera. GMP 2 was approved by council on July 21, 2021, so just a, a month after GMP 1. That included the installation of all other underground utilities, including water lines, power, telecommunications, natural gas. There were some gas lines that were relocated, storm drains, the underground stormwater retention facility and street lights. Most of that work has been in, GMP 1 and 2 have been completed. GMP 3 was approved by council also in 2021 on October 20th. This includes many of the improvements that we've all seen and enjoyed driving on, on Litchfield Road. This is including the roundabout that Mr. Janaski mentioned earlier tonight on Village Parkway. The extension of Village Parkway from Litchfield Road East into the square, eventually connecting to Old Litchfield Road here early next year. And then GMP 4 was approved about a year ago, October 19th of 2020. And then GMP four was approved about a year ago, October nineteenth of 2022. This included the water and sewer line extensions in Honeysuckle. I mentioned that as part of my monthly report for the square. For the section between Old Litchfield Road and Desert, so just a block from this facility here tonight. Relocation of the airline canal up on the north end of the square, up towards the underpass at Litchfield Road. Up by Fairway Drive. The RGB lighting that Councilman Rodanahu mentioned in the Village Parkway medians. And then final design for some additional lighting regarding Village Parkway and the Palm Plaza area of the park. And then finally, GMP five was approved on April nineteenth of this year. And that includes a lot of, a lot of other items to carry the project with, with momentum. This was, it is including curb gutter paving, La Loma Avenue. That's the street I mentioned that's west, will be west of City Hall. North of Wigwam, up north into the square. A lot of the drainage system. We have a couple more roundabouts that are being built on Honeysuckle that are internal to the square. Sidewalks, decorative sidewalks, paving. Lots of landscaping has been going in recently, so that brings us to GMP six tonight. So the GMP six would include roughly ten to eleven pretty significant items for building out the square. I mentioned that, um, working with, and I appreciate, I want to.
Let me see, I want to see if we, maybe we can move this along a little quicker. Try. May not be able to do this, but we'll try. So GMP six was six, as of a month ago or six weeks, six weeks ago, it was a sixteen million dollar deal. And that was outside of our budget, was not going to work. City staff went through and worked with Aiken Gardner and they re-engineered certain, certain things to delete some things. So if you look at the memo that's in your packet, they deleted. They deleted the amphitheater, the peace pole, the clock tower, and the car charging stations and equipment. Most importantly, they kept both bathrooms. Second bathroom being really important to where the, to where that park can work for festivals. You know, so that we can use this thing a little bit, whether we have businesses in there right away or not. So they made, made, all the ma, made major adjustments to GMP six to get it within budget. There are questions, I'm sure, that the vice mayor has and that the others have of some things in this GMP that maybe are Mercedes-Benz when we could really use a Hyundai. Maybe not, but those are items that I think the council would probably like to discuss with staff and Aiken Gardner in a work study. What I would like to know is whether we could, or the, the concept here is a not-to-exceed price of thirteen.
Point eight million.
Thirteen point eight million. So that we'd move it forward with a not-to-exceed price of thirteen point eight million. But then we would come back and look at gold-tongued concrete versus regular concrete. Where's that? Do we want to spend the extra money for it? What's the difference? We could do that in a work study session with the council and with Aiken Gardner to kind of fine tune. You know, you, city staff has already taken a cleaver to this thing and cleaved out the items that really made huge cost difference. There may be other items that the vice mayor would like to have more discussion of and that we ought to look at. Look at as a council in a work study setting as opposed to trying to do that tonight. So if that's the question, can we just approve this as a not-to-exceed? With the understanding that we're going to come back and look at some of these specifications to see if there are things that are, that are specified that maybe we don't want to spend the extra money to have that. You know, through, through this, you know, an example is we've got some really fancy pavement that's already been put in. It's sandblasted, little, little figurines and decorations in it. I mean, it's going to look cool. At some point, at some point in time, I'm sure we're going to look back and say, God, I'm glad we spent an extra hundred thousand dollars doing this. But we might not feel that way on the things that are in here today. So is it possible, I'm asking Aiken Gardner, can we go through and approve this GMP for the major items, not to exceed? With the understanding that you're going to come back here and we can do it in January, we can do it December if you want. For, in a work study session, we'll have the vice mayor and our other contractor here go through these specs and say, let's talk about these four things or these eight things, whatever it is, and see what is the alternative? Can we save fifty thousand? You know, it's not going to be, we're not going to save a million dollars. But maybe there are some savings that we could affect that the council would feel good about. Is that possible? We can work on it. But it can still allow you to, to work on major things that you know you've got to get, you know, you've got to go moving forward. So that the project doesn't get, get messed up in terms of its timing and whatever. Right. Yeah, that stuff, we need to get this, keep this thing moving. So if that's acceptable to the council, I'd like to see a motion that says that. Say, we approved GMP six, maximum price, not to exceed thirteen point eight million. With the understanding that we're going to come back and we're going to look at some specific items within this list. With more, you know, to, to talk about value engineering on those.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If, if I may briefly, so we've, we're using alternative delivery here, right? So inherent in the nature of the contract is it's one price for one big picture scope of work, right? And I hear what everybody's saying and that all sounds really good. But I guess my advice would be that that's essentially a handshake deal, right? The, a GMP is a, is a, when, when you approve the GMP, you approve the whole thing, right? And so on paper, the legally binding document, I think with the council, what we're doing is we're saying, yep, we approve this. We approve this proposal that you've submitted us. We all understand, and then this is kind of the handshake deal, that we're going to come back and maybe we're going to do some change orders later, right? But there's not a, there's not a subset of the GMP where we're approving just the curb gutter part. We're approving the whole thing, including the gold sidewalks.
Well, yeah, we're, we're approving the whole thing as it's written tonight.
Yeah.
With the understanding that within the next four to six weeks maximum. We're going to go through some of the items, some of the specs on these major items to see if there are cost savings. In addition to the cost savings we've already gotten by eliminating big things.
And, and that's within the council's discretion, of course. Mr. Mayor, my legal advice, which doesn't factor in the outstanding relationships that you have or the trust that you've built. My, my just straight legal advice is, you know, you, you won't actually have a legal right to do that, right? You're, you're agreeing to let them build it with the gold sidewalks the way they have it now. And if the council, you know, does have that trusted relationship and feels comfortable moving forward, that, that's fine. As long as everybody understands that, you know, on paper, we're not reserving that right. We're, we're accepting a, a full proposal as is.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I agree with your legal opinion either. Yeah, I, I think we can hire them. We can agree to a contract that says, we have a not-to-exceed price. All the major items in this thing, we're going to do, we're going to do all these major items. But we're going to come back and revisit some of the finishes that you're using to see if we can save money. So we can bring that thirteen eight, we, actually not-to-exceed means we'd like to still bring it down. So maybe we get it down to thirteen point five. I don't know. But we want to work with them directly to do that.
Of course, Mr. Mayor, we could do that. My point is that we don't have that contract. That's not a contract that we have here. We haven't been given a proposal for that. We've got a GMP under a C Mar contract. So that is something we could do. It's not something that we have tonight that you can't, that, that, that contract doesn't exist. The contract that exists is a GMP proposal under an existing C Mar contract. Which is a all-for-one total price, not total GMP. Absolutely, and that's. And, and that's what I'm saying, is from a legal perspective, what you're actually doing is you're accepting the GMP as it is with the, I guess, additional kind of handshake understanding or, or good relationship understanding.
Specifically, that we're going to use the change order process to potentially change some of the finishes to try to save more money.
And so is it council's expectation that someone will create an agreement that says that? Because right now, there's, there is no agreement. Aiken Gardner won't sign anything that says, yes, we're going to be doing change orders. Unless, if that's the council's expectation, then that would have to be drafted. And, and maybe that could be your motion directing, you know, staff to, to make adjustments to the GMP so that it reflects that. That, that could be something. But right now, that contract doesn't exist.
Thank you, Mayor. What, what I'm trying to get at is, and Councilman Romack and I were just looking at some of these, these numbers. It's four thousand six hundred dollars a piece for grates around trees. There's thirty-two of them. It's a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to put grates around thirty-two trees. We've got ten trashcans in here. They're two thousand dollars a piece for ten trashcans. There's stuff like that that is glaring. We have concrete that's ten bucks a foot, which is, in this market, on the high side, but it's, it's our government price. But then when we turn it into something called autumn gold, which I'd like explain to me, it's thirty-five dollars a square foot. And I hope that's something more than putting some coloring in it, because we make peace. Yeah, yeah. Which is what I, which, yeah, which is what I'm kind of concerned with. These trashcans also may be custom-designed trashcans. We're having them custom-built at two thousand dollars a piece. Yeah.
So again, this, I think this conversation, I mean, we're going to be here all night and not be able to answer a lot of this stuff because we don't have enough, all the materials we need to even know what we're talking about. So I'm trying to find a path that we can, we can let them keep their momentum going. But set up a procedure where we can go through these line items and, and talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have two possibilities I could suggest if, if you don't mind. One would be, I mean, you could vote to reject this GMP and ask them to bring back a new GMP after you work with them. Now, that would stop the momentum for some.
And I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think we want to do that.
The recommended motion in your packet is to, is to accept the GMP that's been presented and to authorize the mayor to execute a construction phase approval with them. You could probably modify that motion in a bit to get to, I think what the mayor's trying to say is you could say, look, we, we accept the, the GMP price as a not-to-exceed thirteen point eight million and authorize the mayor to execute a modified, uh, uh, construction approval, construction phase approval document that reflects, you know, that there's going to be a, a council work session and, and, and that both sides expect some change orders to the GMP, something like that. Something that, that the council is directing, look, we're approving this after the actual document has been modified to reflect what we are agreeing here tonight. We're going to do a change order process. It, that, that's the kind of thing you could do, right? But that, again, that'd be a thing that doesn't exist. And so for you to take action tonight, part of your action could be directing staff, you know, authorizing the mayor to execute a limited notice to proceed or, or some sort of modified document that staff makes. We'd make changes to the document before you sign it.
How much time do they need? Where are they at?
Sorry?
Where are they at in their, their process? How much time do they need before they need this done? Are they, are we months away from needing this or are they?
I don't know. I assume it was a little closer. January?
Sometime in, sometime in January before February.
I mean, one of, one of the things you have to remember, Paul, is that, is that, uh, design review and there was another committee set up to review trashcans and iron around the trees. And then all of these other details and the, whatever the concrete acid wash is going to be.
A lot of that, a lot of this stuff has, has not gone through that process. It's not gone to design review.
A lot of the stuff did go, Tom, just, and it was, it was presented. It was. It was presented to committees that, that looked at it and said, yeah, this is what we want to do. These, and there were a lot of these things that were specified or approved. We didn't know any pricing.
Yeah, they had no idea that trashcans are going to be two thousand dollars a piece.
Right, so for me, a change order is a way of life. So why, why can't move something out of this chamber? It's just a fact of life, you know, that's construction. It's always changing. People change their mind.
Usually when you change them, not more. We're looking for a different kind of change order.
Mr. Mayor.
Again, so I think that we need to move this forward and I think, I don't think there's any question that we all want to do these major ten things. So these things need to get done. The only question is, can we save some additional money by looking at issues like the grates or the trashcans or whatever? And do that in a work study session where we get all the information and the council can actually deal with it in a, in a more, you know, different format than trying to do it at a council meeting. So given that, if someone willing to make a motion to approve GMP six for a maximum price or a price not to exceed thirteen point eight million. Subject to, what do we call this thing? A modified, what'd you call the modified? But what, you had a name for the modified.
They suggested a limited notice to proceed and so.
So subject to a limited notice to proceed with the, with, with potential for cost savings to be done through change orders. That's what the motion would be. That's the concept. All right, is there a second? Does the city attorney understand enough about what the motion is so that we can get our minutes right and we can get this thing done in a way that is relatively okay?
If I can, if I can say it, Mr. Mayor, and you tell me if I got it right, is that we're approving the, the total amount of the GMP.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed thirteen point eight million. But we're authorizing the mayor to sign, to execute at this time a limited notice to proceed that's going to, uh. Do we want to say what's going to be in the notice to proceed or is the council, you know, trusting the mayor to basically know what's supposed to be in it before he executes it? What needs to go now? That, I think you mentioned ten items, Mr. Mayor, that need to go.
We, we have a list of, I call them finishing items, you know, whether you call it grates or trashcans or the color of concrete. It's those, it's not major curb and gutter, you know, is the roadway, is that stuff. It's, it's minor, minor changes.
Reserve, so approving the, the GMP amount not to exceed thirteen point eight million and authorizing the mayor to execute a limited notice to proceed that reserves those finishing items for further council consideration.
Further council consideration and possible change through change orders.
Right, and so between now, assuming this motion passes, what would happen is you would approve the amount and then staff would work with Aiken Gardner to produce that limited notice to proceed, which you would then sign, Mr. Mayor, once it exists.
Does that all make sense to the council? Okay, there's been a motion by Councilman Brandon Watson. Was it seconded? Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, Councilman Claire, are you, are you set on what we're doing here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll, we'll get the, we'll get this language worked out. And then we'll set a time, a specific time when we can get the council together, get you guys together, get our staff together, sit around a table and talk about some of these issues so we can try to see. We, we have the benefit of not having a council meeting in December, so I don't feel guilty about trying to get these guys together in December.
It's a change order meeting.
That's right, a change order meeting. All right.
If we could see pictures of what a, an autumn gold sidewalk ramp under Mag two thirty-eight looks like.
We've already put them in.
You gotta be, yeah, you got a big fence, so that we can't get in there to look at that stuff, so, you know, so.
I'm telling you, it's beautiful.
I've seen some higher than that too. Yeah, I know. There's a lot of gouging going on. I totally, I've seen it every day. I totally understand.
Okay.
I use the word gouging not lightly.
We're going to, we're going to move on to item H. Approval of the use agreement for the shared parking lot with the dental office, which we have in our packet. Which we need to, we need to approve because it's running out. But to which there will be some minor changes because of changes that came from the dentist that were too late to incorporate in its packet. So do we want to have a full discussion on this or do we want to just keep using this parking lot? So do we want to have a full discussion on this, or do we want to just keep using this parking lot?
I would declare conflict and not participate.
Okay, so Vice Mayor can't participate. So you have the, you have the, uh, the shared use agreement in your packet. Is there a motion, is there a motion to approve it with the understanding that we are going to do an amendment to it at the next meeting? Small amendment. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so. Well, yeah, he, he isn't, he has declared a conflict, making sure the minutes show that. Now, is there a motion to go into executive session, uh, to discuss item ten E with our legal counsel? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. When we come out of executive session, tonight is unusual in that we will be doing, potentially be doing more business on item E after we receive advice from our council, so. We will, yeah. Yeah, these ducks move real slow. Need a shotgun to move along. Okay, so we call the, sit the, uh, regular meeting of the city council back, back to a session after an executive session. We are left with item, you know, ten E, which is introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-seven related to the Thomas Plan Development. Now, is there a motion to introduce this ordinance? Is there a second? Is there any further discussion on the motion? Yes.
Are we going to hold that motion and direct the city attorney to bill? But of course, that mechanism.
I don't know that we need to do it in the, in, in that motion. I think we've already given direction to staff to get that development going, put together. So that, we're going to need that development going before this is going to be, you know, boat run.
Is it, of course, the mechanism going to go into this?
Okay, everybody good? All those in favor of introducing this ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ordinance is introduced, is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to adjourning? Okay, we are adjourning.